I'd like to call the June 5, 2024 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order at 6:30. Mr. Pinio, do we have a need for a non-public session?
We do. We do. We have 91 eight. The mic is... Nothing.
How about Dave's?
We do three items under employment, reputation, and real estate.
All right. First order of business, May 1, 2024, minutes of the regular meeting. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? I do. As I went through in multiple places, on page four, there were two. Page six and three, it says attached, and I want to make sure that those attachments get attached to these minutes because they weren't in our copy. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I got, Madam Chairman, page eight, just before the item six, other business. Mr. O'Brien, who was the staff person to manage and inspect trails? The answer was provided, I believe, by the town manager that said Chuck Smith.
Okay.
So if there's no others, I'll recommend what those modifications, if those minutes be approved.
Okay.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Paul, seconded by Brad. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. All righty. Next set of minutes, May 15, 2024. Six. I have one. It's on page six. It's the last motion. It should say, in the one, two, third sentence, July 27, not 37.
There's no other corrections. I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
I'm sorry. I thought you were going to say, I have one.
Sure. Come on.
Page 12, motion by Ms. Murray to accept rules of procedure. Mr. O'Brien voted no because he wanted to have two public input segments. It just needs the, it says two sides. It says two public input segments.
Yes, I have that same change. Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead, Brad.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
So moved to approve.
Second.
And this is as amended?
As amended.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. That was Brad and Dave. Okay. Last set of minutes, May 22.
I would just have it added, had the date added to the top.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I also, I think we also had other business that night, and that's not listed here. Missing the topic, other business, so before.
How about we table until next meeting?
Okay. Let's take, can I have a, did I hear a motion, Dave?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We table that, May 22 until our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Brian, so I have a motion by Dave, seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. I'd like to open up a public hearing, and I'll read the notice. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15. How come it says May 15? All right, let me go over here. A Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on May 15, tabled to May 5, on or about 6:30 in the Great Hall Town Hall, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to consider the application for an issuance of an alcohol beverage permit to Jeffrey Landell, sponsored by the Friends of Abenaki, for a wedding on October 26, 2024, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, 390 Pine Hill Road, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Is there anybody who would like to speak to this alcohol permit?
Bill Swaffiel for the Friends of Abenaki. Just want to let you know that we have agreed to be their sponsor.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this permit? Hearing none. I'd like to close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
A move that we approve the alcohol beverage permit to Godfrey Reynolds, sponsored by the Friends of Abenaki, for a wedding, October 26, 2024, at Abenaki Ski Lodge, 390 Pine Hill Road, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Dave, seconded by Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. I'll open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 15, 2024, tabled to June 5, on or about 6:30 p.m., in the Great Hall of Wolfboro Town Hall, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to consider an application for the issuance of an alcohol beverage permit to Moose Mountain Regional Greenways for their mountain bike event on September 21, 2024, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, 390 Pine Hill Road, from 9:30 p.m. to 2:00. Do I have anybody who'd like to speak to this permit?
Good evening. I'm Sid Villance with Moose Mountains Regional Greenways. Thank you for this opportunity to revisit this. We have submitted an addendum to our permit request with the intent to address the concerns about children being near alcohol. Have put a couple of protocols in place that will basically announce to participants in advance what the guidelines are. They will be part of the waiver, so parents will be informed. Only children allowed are under supervision of their children, and there will be a section of area within the lodge that will be supervised with a checkpoint for legal age and people only drinking alcohol inside.
Okay. Do I have anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this alcohol permit? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments, questions, concerns? I think this answered all the concerns I had, and we also were told that there are no children's event going on at that time.
Right.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a permit for Moose Mountain Regional Greenways for their mountain bike event, for the alcohol permit, to be held on September 21, 2024, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay. Do I have anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this alcohol permit? Hearing, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments, questions, concerns? I think this answered all the concerns I had, and we also were told that there are no children's event going on at that time.
Right.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a permit for Moose Mountain Regional Greenways for their mountain bike event, for the alcohol permit, to be held on September 21, 2024, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge, from 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Brad, a second by Paul. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Brian?
We need to, in the motion, have it, because we have some conditional improvements in here. It says conditionally approved, subject to a walkthrough by Chuck Smith no later than July 15, and a certificate of insurance also. So those need to be included in the motion.
May I speak to the walkthrough? My understanding was the walkthrough had to do with the trails used. I think the permit and the certificate of insurance apply to the alcohol permit.
Correct.
Okay.
This is the alcohol permit, not the temporary event's already begun.
Okay.
You okay, Brian?
Yep.
All right. So, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. You have your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 5, 2024, at 6:30 p.m., for the acceptance of unanticipated funds for an amount awarded that is less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B relative to grant monies not to exceed $3,726 to the town of Wolfboro to be used for the Lakes Region Household Hazards Race Product Facility Hazardous Waste Collection program.
Yes, Sarah Silk, and I am here representing Lakes Region Household Hazers Product Facility, and we have actually two items, and I would like to introduce the people that are with me. Dick Shea is a selectman from Alton, and we have the next of Ryan Heath is the chair of the Joint Board for Lakes Region Household Hazers Product Facility, and he was the chief of police down in Alton, so he was very familiar with our medication collections that we had. And then we have Dr. Sarah Conley that is with us, and she's for the second item, but I would proceed with the first item for the hearing. I come before you every year. The Department of Environmental Services give us grant money based on population, and the grant that I applied for that is awarded to us is actually for July of '24 through June of '25. And they are very specific about a motion for who is allowed to sign this, which is similar to every year. And they would like the Board of Selectmen, on the meeting from tonight's date, June 5, 2024, to allow Jim Pinio, the town manager, duly authorized to enter into a contract and agreement on behalf of the town of Wolfboro with the state of New Hampshire, or any of its agencies or departments, and further is authorized to execute, excuse me, any documents which may, in his or her judgment, be desired or necessary to affect the purpose of this vote. So essentially, that motion would allow Jim Pinio to sign the contract with the state for the grant money for the Lakes Region Household Hazers Product Facility, and the grant money is awarded for the population of both towns.
Okay. Do I have anybody else who'd like to speak to this grant? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Select board members, any comments, questions, concerns? Can I have a motion? And it's the motion that Sarah read, and the amount that we would be receiving is $3,726, which is more than we have before, which is very muchly needed as our contract went up 15% this year for the waste holler. Who wants to make that motion? I'll make that motion that Sarah read.
I'll second it.
Oh, Brad, okay. Linda made the motion, Brad seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Now, we have one other thing that she'd like to do at this time.
This is, whoops, I got to stay next to the mic. This is Sarah Conley. In order to do our pharmaceutical collections, we were required to have a pharmacist who could positively identify all of the controlled drugs, prescriptive drugs, so that they could be given to the police department, and they would then be disposed of. Okay? But they, in order for them to have custody of the correct medications, a pharmacist was essential. If we did not have one, we could not do the program. We were a pilot program for Northeast Recycling Council in 2006. Sarah has been with us almost the entire time, and we had as many as four collections some years. We also had a dozen years with Mike Oaks, who was a registered pharmacist, and he was unable to attend. May I read the proclamation for her?
Yes, you may.
Proclamation of appreciation for outstanding service to Dr. Sarah Conley, where his accidental ingestion and misuse of expired and unwanted over-the-counter drugs and controlled and non-controlled prescriptive pharmaceuticals caused life-threatening emergencies, and whereas the Lakes Region Household Hazers Product Facility prioritized the health of all local community members of all ages with a program for safe and appropriate disposal of pharmaceuticals prior to the availability of drug drop boxes at local police department lobbies, and whereas protocols established for the Lakes Region Household Hazers Product Facility as a New England Recycling Council pilot program in 2006 required positive identification of controlled prescriptive drugs by a pharmacist for secure transfer of custody to local law enforcement for destruction, and whereas Dr. Sarah Conley performed such duties multiple times per year for a majority of the 18-year program with dedication and professionalism, now therefore be resolved that the Lakes Region Household Hazers Product Facility and towns of Alton and Wolfboro hereby honor Dr. Sarah Conley for outstanding service presented June 5, 2024. Ryan Heath, LRHHPF Joint Board Chair, Sarah Emerson Silk, LRHHPF Joint Board Vice Chair.
Thank you for doing that for all those years, and Sarah, for having the medicine collection. My understanding that will no longer happen because it's now being done by the police department?
Yes. The police department in both communities have boxes to take your expired pills in their lobbies. Wolfboro's is open 24/7. The one in Alton is open whenever their office is open. We will not be accepting them now. It was a tough decision, but because of the boxes after COVID allowed people to come into the lobbies again, we have been getting fewer people, and because of the outrageous rise in prices from our waste holler, we had to cut services somewheres. There is no alternative for household hazardous waste, but we have wonderful alternatives now with both police departments for pills. So, and it's important because June would have been our first medicine collection for this season, so we really wanted to get the word out so people aren't disappointed when they attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 5, 2024, on or about 6:30 p.m., at the Great Hall Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to consider entering into a lease agreement with the Historical Society for the Clark House property as voted per Article 21 on the 2024 town warrant. And is there somebody here who'd like to speak to this?
I'm Gene Danu with the Wolfboro Historical Society. A very quick review, because most of you have heard this, and I'm really happy that all of these people are here to support us. Our original lease, our original lease was obtained in 1927 to operate the Clark House as a town museum, open to the public. The Historical Society has been doing that for almost 99 years now. Over the years, things have changed quite a lot, and there've been a lot of confusing documents and tacit approvals. We added the, first, the schoolhouse in 1959, the firehouse in 1982, and finally, the barn in 2018. After we added the barn, we found that there were actually no agreements in effect as to how to operate the barn, and a, really, a number of other agreements applying to all the other facilities. We asked for a new lease to cover everything in 2018. We've been working very diligently with our town manager to come up with the exact wording for the lease. The general concept of a 10-year lease with a 10-year extension was overwhelmingly approved by the community in the March warrant articles, and we have gone to the point where we have a word-by-word lease available. Is that right, Jim?
That is correct.
So at this point, I believe this is a formality for the board to give a final approval.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this lease agreement public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, we've looked at this lease a number of times. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? It is my understanding, Jim, all we have to do is vote to accept the lease because it was approved by the voters.
That is correct, and then it will be put with the town clerk's office, and it'll also be registered at the county.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
Move to enter into a lease agreement with the Historical Society for the Clark House property as voted per Article 21 on the 2024 warrant article.
Second.
And I pull a second. Gene?
Just a reminder that we have to also get the approval of the Bowers, because they own some of the equipment in the firehouse, which is on loan to the town.
Okay. So the board, once we approve this, it needs to go to the Bowers?
Yeah, the provisions that the loan was under are a part of this document in Appendix 4, and there's no changes to that, but we do have to have them as a signatory.
Okay. We will approve it. I'll get a vote on this, and then Jim can get it to the Bowers. So I have a motion by Brian, a second by Paul to accept the lease. Do I have any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. We've got that part done. All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we have two temporary event permits. These are amended for rain dates. So I'll open up the public hearing, amended for a rain date. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 5, on or about 6:30 p.m., in the Great Hall of Wolfboro Town Hall, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to consider amending an application for issuance of a temporary event permit to New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the Sadie Hawkins Day Pickleball Tournament at Fossfield Pavilion Pickleball Courts and Tennis Courts on June 29, 2024, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and a rain date of June 30, permit 2024-3. And the reason this is coming to us is they did not ask for a rain date. So I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to it? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments or questions? Can I have a motion?
Move to amend the pickleball club Sadie Hawkins Day Pickleball Tournament to include a rain date of June 30, permit number 2024-3.
Second.
I have a motion by Brian, seconded by Dave. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll open up the next public hearing. Amend for a rain date. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June 5, on or about 6:30 p.m., in the Great Hall of Wolfboro Town Hall, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to consider amending an application for the issuance of a temporary event permit for New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to host the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Tournament at Fossfield Pavilion Pickleball Courts and Tennis Courts on September 5 through 8, 2024, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Rain date, September 9, permit number 2024-4, and this is again to add September 9. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this amended temporary event permit? Hearing none. Board members, any comments? Can I have a motion?
Move to amend the temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Lakes Region Pickleball Club to hold their New Hampshire Lakes Regional Tournament and amend it with a rain date for September 9, permit number 2024-4.
Second.
Is that you, Dave? Okay. I have a motion by Brian, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. All righty. Now, I think this is the one that most people are here for. This is public comments. And I'll open up this public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on June 5, 2024, at their meeting that begins at 6:30 p.m. in Great Hall Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to take public comment on the proposed Route 28 New Hampshire DOT South Main Street project. That includes the relocation of the municipal, Wolfboro Municipal Electric Department service lines and poles. Information regarding the proposed project, please call 603-271-3921. Other information, the project can be found on the New Hampshire DOT project website, and we gave the list of the website. Before I open up the public hearing for comments, if you've given us comments before, you filled out the survey, we have all that information. If you have added comments, we'd be glad to hear it. We would like this not to take hours tonight, if at all possible, and we also would like comments, if you have them, about the need to move the electric power lines to accommodate an extra lane of traffic. We had an estimate cost in a presentation from Barry Muccio, the director of our electric department. It cost about $1.2 million, and Jim, if I'm correct, that can be paid for in the rates that we have right now. It just means other projects are going to be moved later down the timeline.
That is correct, and that is also a best-case scenario, quote, was my understanding.
It's a best-case scenario. Okay. I will open up the public hearing. When you come up, state your name. So who's going to be the first one who'd like to come give us some comments?
I'm Dwight Devork. I'm a former selectman from 2006 to 2009, been a resident of Wolfboro for 42 years, also a lifelong resident of this area. I know this town inside and out, and I think we, most of us in this room will agree that the idea of a roundabout at Pickering Corner is not feasible, it's not logical, it's not cost-efficient, it's going to cause a problem with eminent domain and taking over people's property. I don't think it's a good idea, and I don't know why the DOT insists on putting these things in, but in my opinion, it's an absolute waste of money. When I was selectman, I had looked into the cost of putting a street light there because, a traffic light, because we had discussed that back around 2008, I think it was, and at the time, a traffic light would have cost about $45,000 to install, and I would like to know what the town or what the state anticipates for a cost of putting in a roundabout in comparison, and I'd like to know what the cost of an actual traffic light installation would be nowadays. I don't think personally that a roundabout makes sense there, or at Kingswood. We'll just have a gigantic bottle, backup bottle up, and if you think about it, at Pickering Corner, if there was a traffic circle there, and there are cars trying to get through town, and we all know that when it's busy in town, the traffic backs up all the way to Pass Brewster and up to Morrissey sometimes, so if you have a traffic circle there, and there's people jammed trying to get downtown, and they can't get through the circle, it's just going to back up more and more. So I don't see it as a solution. I don't see it as a logical thing to do, and I don't see why it's a target over and over again in this particular location. We have not had any life-threatening accidents there, to my knowledge. I don't think there's been any fatalities in my whole life there. It's not like the 171 and Route 28 junction over Nocopy that had three, I think, deaths on record before they put that in. So I'd like to know exactly why that's happening, and also the cost to relocate electric cars. And also, the cost to relocate electric wires, I do not think should be borne by the electric users. I think it's unfair to us to have that foisted on us. Our electric rates are competitive, but they're still high, and we need to keep that under control and control the spending as much as possible. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Johnson, lifelong resident of Wolfboro. Served on the planning board, budget committee, have had businesses in town dating back to 74 with Montgomery Ward. So I echo exactly what Dwight is saying. Everything he said is true. Why don't we look at a traffic light? Works on Route 16 and 28 exceptionally well. You can set those traffic lights to your preference. If it's keyed by traffic coming up Pickering Hill to Brickyard Hill to Pickering Corner, it'll trigger and the light will turn. The other part of that is, of the three proposals, and I'll read the one that's preferred, the enhanced intersection design, which is preferred for these eight points. Brewster Academy maintains existing Academy Drive entrance. An additional crosswalk is created from Richardson House to the Three Sisters Service Station, extension of the right turning lane heading north. Reduction of the speed limit to 20 miles an hour from the Wolfboro Children's Center to the Carpenter School. Installation of signage, alerting motorists to stop for pedestrians. Enhanced lighting to be installed at all crosswalks for aesthetically, that is aesthetically compatible with Wolfboro's character. Improving striping on the left lane and straight lane entering Center Street, heading south on South Main Street. Enhanced curbing on both service station businesses. So all of these things do nothing, nothing to eliminate any of the congestion there. It's a feel-good kind of thing. The only thing that will change the traffic flow and improve the traffic flow is a traffic I live in North Wolfboro, and when I come down to the Pickering Corner, I'm one of the guys that actually lets the guys go on Pickering Hill. And wouldn't it be nice just to simply have a traffic light? It's more cost effective, we don't have to do anything electrically. A roundabout is just a ludicrous idea. So I don't know whether we actually have input that's listened to by the DOT. If it is, that would be great, because I think it's pretty unanimous by the applause and some of the feedback that you'll get tonight, that a roundabout is absolutely a bad, bad, bad idea. So my vote would be for traffic light.
Let me just fill in that New Hampshire DOT was here in August last year. We had another public hearing and they had had a survey. It was about to close. Those people asked whether we could reopen that survey. When they were here last August, they had 33 or 34 surveys. They now have 350. And if you went to the website, they have the percentages and all the comments. So if you filled out a survey, you send it into them, it's on their website and people can read their comments. And so they have listened. I just want to make sure people know that we have 350 surveys. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Come on up.
Claude Rosiger, I live in North Wolfboro. I've lived here since 1963, so that's a fair amount of time. And I recognize that there are issues with Pickering Corner and the inline. But what I want to talk to you about is not so much the proposals that have been put out, and the residents have their opinions, and I'm not against them, I don't know which is the best. None of them seems very good to me. That's a problem because we do have a traffic problem. So what I'd like to raise is something that was raised, I don't know, somebody here will know, 40 years ago, a little more. I was against it then, a bypass. One way or another, whatever we do, in the course of time, probably after I'm pushing daisies, there will have to be a bypass, because there really isn't another solution. Roundabout, traffic lights, all of those cause congestion. By the way, there was a discussion here of a traffic light. It's not a traffic light. Have you seen what the DOT did in Center Harbor? It's like 30 traffic lights. It's madness. There, I don't know, I'll leave that alone. But go check Center Harbor, that's what they do, okay? So I'm only putting that out to you as a board for discussion with the DOT. Does that really make sense? I had a look earlier today at maps of Wolfboro. I tried to imagine where the old bypass suggestion was. Well, obviously you can't go out on Witten Necro, that's silly, but you could rejoin Route 109. You could do that. It won't come near your house, don't worry. No, there is a way. From McManus Road, you could cut across. It's about the only area left open. Now, everybody's going to be unhappy with something. I would be too. The question that I put to you, is there another solution to what we're discussing? Or are we just going to end up with, I don't know, 15, 20, 25 traffic lights? The same traffic congestion? A roundabout that does whatever? And I don't disagree with the gentleman who spoke, who said that it's not doing a thing. It's expensive, doesn't do much. So I leave it at that. I'd like to put to you that a serious discussion be engaged, I only say engaged, studied, before this would be done at great expense with perhaps very little benefit about eruding for a bypass, because all the traffic that simply goes through Wolfboro to go east and then north shouldn't be coming through the center of town. That's what I put out. Thank you.
Anybody else like to give us any?
Maggie Steer, no longer chair of the Heritage Commission, but still very involved in preserving the character of Wolfboro. And I am really concerned at the changes that a roundabout would bring to our community. I've seen what happened in places like New London and Peterborough, lovely rural communities like ours, and it dramatically changes the feel of the place. When I look at traffic that is rooted around a common, for instance, in Keene or in Milford, that's a whole different story. The common is often planted with shade trees, and it feels comfortable, charming, historic. I don't feel like we need to sacrifice those assets of Wolfboro on the altar of traffic. Who says traffic trumps the character of our community? And that really concerns me.
Hi, I'm Gildizer, I'm also a resident of Wolfboro, and I basically have a question, even though I'm opposed to the roundabout or rotary, but my question is, what options do we have? If the state decides they're going to do this, is there an appeal process? Are we stuck with their decision? What options do we as a town have?
There have been a series of public hearings, and there were three or four different options at each intersection. And I think the New Hampshire DOT is here, they are listening. This is another one of the public hearings that they've come to, so we'll, I think if we said, "Get out of town, we don't want you to do anything," they would leave, but I think we'd have not a lot of support for doing anything else. That's just my personal opinion. I don't know if anybody else wants to give any.
If we don't have a lot of support for doing anything else, meaning I didn't quite understand what she meant by that.
I guess I'm saying they've put a lot of money into coming this far in the town. In 2010, spent $99,000 to help design different concepts to upgrade Route 28. We pushed to have it on the 10-year plan. It's now coming to that time. We had a committee in the town, their decision was an enhanced intersection at Pickering Corner, and that was when they had the large roundabout. Now they have a mini roundabout. Then we took that report and gave it to New Hampshire DOT, and these are the public hearings leading us up to what of those two options will we think we might want to want at this point?
So if they do decide on the rotary, we are stuck with it and we do pay for it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Brody Duches, I live in Wolfboro on Elm Street. If, well, I assume it will move forward, the project. I'm on the Section 106 consulting party, so that's the folks will be consulting the historical, different historical aspects of the proposal and how it might impact the historical character of our community and the environmental impacts. And I have, I do have a, I don't have a preference as to the plans that have been proposed. I've been to all the different public hearings and seen DOT's presentations, and I see merits of different ones, but I want to really point out that the town, when they first built and erected that Civil War statue, did so by vote. And in that vote at town meeting, there was very specific language as to the orientation of that statue. And I think that vote should be respected, and a rotary would directly conflict with that vote, and that's reported in Dave Bauer's History of Wolfboro. So I think if you were to move forward with the project and you were to appropriate money, I would argue especially, and I may actually go as far to go to the state archives at UNH and try to find that exact vote. I doubt they'll have anything that goes past 1920, but I'll try. But I think you'd have to have a vote of the voters to actually move that statue. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
I do believe if the town said, "No, we did not want anything that New Hampshire DOT would go away," would not, that's my opinion. But they'll be coming later, you can ask, we'll ask them.
Hi, Bobby Budman. I think the thing that bothers me a little bit about this is that we have not done any studies now. We haven't done any traffic studies. We haven't tried other things in town. I know that the citizens of town, we have workarounds, like before the bank was sold to Brewster, that sort of was a cut through for, you know, the people around town. You know, we take a right down lane or come around the back and then come up or go up Pine. I know that the people of Friend Street were here a couple weeks ago asking for a one-way. I don't know if we tried putting on Pine a one-way and then making the end of the section of Center Street a one-way also, where you have two left turning lanes there. We've just done no studies before we spend all this money. I haven't even seen the little guide wires across the row counting traffic. And it just seems like we're making decisions before we have a trial period with things that we might be able to do that do not fiscally reach into our pockets again for another project.
Hi, Anne Blodgett, 73-year resident of Pleasant Valley Road. So it's been a moving target. I have questions that I need answered, so I think some other people might want to know. How much all-in will each option cost the taxpayers of Wolfboro? In other words, electrical and is it 3 million, is it 5 million that's our match? That's, is that a moving target? Is that a number you're going to tell us? Dave, looks like you might tell me.
3 to 5 million, you were right on.
Okay, thank you. I worry about some of the proposals. We're a nice pedestrian town, there's a lot of walking during COVID and still, so the impact on pedestrians and bikers. I worry about the trees that are going to be taken down, and I don't really have a handle on how many would be removed, but I think it would really destroy the rural character going out South Main. Let's see. I, like Bobby, agree that there should be some in-town analysis, maybe by the PD, watching traffic patterns, not just DOT, looking at it from the aspect of our town and what we need. I also worry about moving the monument and emergency, which one is going to facilitate emergency egress and access the best? And maybe our new chief has a handle on that.
Jody Person. I just wanted to make sure there is not a Friends of the Rotary yet, right? There's no organization Friends of? Just wanted to mention that. Because you know, I'll be against it.
Let me say that this project started in 2010. We had three or four contact sensitive solution meetings, and we came up with some of the designs. We looked at, there's in here exactly the width, bicycle lanes, et cetera. That was before even the committee put this in 2018, put a report that we gave to DES. So we've had public input since 2010, and there was a couple meetings up at Crescent Lake. So we have spent time, and I want people to realize, there was a lot of time of this town government working and trying to decide what we wanted to do. And some of the concepts were because people talked, and we talked about crossroads, and we talked about what happens up at the golf course. So those discussions did take place. Anybody wants it, we can get you the 2018 report that we did. I still want your comments today, but I do want you to know that this is not something that we have not spent a lot of time working on.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Could I just ask the folks from DOT, because I left in '21, just got back, and I also remember that there were traffic studies done, that there were flow models put together, that there were conversations about what we were going to do with summertime traffic and winter traffic. And I may have forgot, but it would probably be unfair to leave that stone not turned over and looked at to suggest that we hadn't, or somebody hadn't done that. So if the DOT people, when they get up to the microphone, if they'd kindly update us on some of those data, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Hi, Tony Fallon, 49th Center Street. A little history on roundabouts that I have personal experience with, just via a friend. They started at a very lively conversation similar to what we're having on in a very similar community, Foys Corner in Rye. They had a lot of ongoing, years-long conversation about having a stoplight there, where you can go out to Newcastle or go down to Odeon or go over to Rye Center. The roundabout was chosen, and that was a new thing, and that was brought by Victor Assi, my friend, he used to be a professor at UNH, and he's a client of mine. I meant to bring it, but I didn't get around to it. He has to sell New Hampshire DOT on it, it was new to them and to the townspeople. He had a very, very long list of pluses and minuses of stoplights versus a roundabout. In general, the boiled-down version is they're much safer, much more economical long-term, and much more energy efficient as far as traffic goes. And after Victor sold the Citizens of Rye and DOT on it, they've kind of been popping up everywhere. And of course, we know the one up in Nausicaä. So I'm in favor of them. I would counter that it's not, it would detract from our character, because in general, roundabouts have a lot of plants. have a lot of plants in landscaping versus galvanized steel towers and that kind of thing. And they're much more calming. I'd love to actually also see one at Lainer and Pine and Center. I walk here most nights. I didn't because of the storm, but they have a calming effect. They slow down the traffic. And I'd love for us to get a 30 mile an hour speed sign after you turn onto Center Street because right now there's actually no speed limit sign. So as a pedestrian oftentimes crossing there, I find that not so good. But so I do, I know this is a newer thing. It kind of started in New Hampshire 20 or so years ago, but I beg people to consider the positive aspects. Thanks.
As, as a compact roundabout, and the DOT can speak on this more, I think it is going to be completely covered with stone because it needs to be that way so that large logging trucks and other large vehicles can drive over the middle of it. So it will not be a green space. It will just be like the one in Oscepee that has bricks or pavers or something to that effect.
Does anybody else who hasn't spoken want to speak? And then I'll go back to anybody who wants to.
When you get a chance.
What?
I want to speak.
Okay, yes, next.
I'm Roger Murray. I live off of Pleasant Valley Road in Wolfboro. And I was a member, or I am a member, of the Route 28 Study Committee. And I would just like to pick up on an earlier comment. When you talk about a traffic light, you're talking about Center Harbor. And the proposals for traffic lights would eliminate a significant amount of parking on South Main Street. And we have a shortage of parking as it is. I also, as a member of the committee, am not in favor of a roundabout at McManus Road. I come out of Pleasant Valley Road, and I have not had a problem there. And the only time there seems to be a problem is 180-plus days a year when, for a few hours or less, school is getting in or out. But one of the things about this hearing was there was going to be a discussion about the relocation of the electric lines. And I'm not sure what that all entails, but it's my understanding, as a member of the committee, I was not aware of this, we're going to be cutting down an enormous number of trees on South Main Street, which I would think would have a devastating impact on the town. I mean, they cut down a few trees that were dying at the high school. That looks bad enough, but I certainly want to, would want to see that running up and down South Main Street, particularly from Clark Road down. Years ago, we had elm trees, and efforts were made to bring back the trees. And I just think it would be extraordinarily negative impact on the town if we were to go in there and cut down trees.
Hi, my name's Carol Zachor. You know, I only wish that the town had listened to the state some years ago. They wanted to put Route 28 down there at Western Autobody. They wanted to put it around Lake Wentworth so all those people that were going up 16 could just not come through town. But the townsfolk wanted people to come to town. And now we have them here. And what are we going to do with them? Yeah, we all know, most of them, you know, and I'm glad that that was clarified about the traffic study because that's really important. You know, I've tried to think this through in terms of a light. I live on North High, on Highland, up at North, North Main. And I don't know, somehow with a light, I envision that the traffic's going to back up there. I don't know. I'm probably wrong. I've done a lot of traveling around. I've seen some of these roundabouts, and some of them are very thoughtfully done. You know, I have this really, I'm really a bit twisted between. I love the, the nature, the trees. You know, I don't know if there's an opportunity for every tree that's taken down to, to plant another so that our generations, you know, to come. I just saw an article, in fact, somewhere. This is kind of scary. Wolfboro's voted the second-best little town on a lake. And I don't know if that's in the country or in New Hampshire, but we better be prepared, I guess. Yeah, I really, I, I go for, I don't want to see a light, but, and I know about, I'm in a domain, my own dad, he had his property cut in half. I'm in a domain, seven acres estate took, but it was for the, good of the public, you know, for the safety of the public. And that was okay. And I, I don't know. It's, it's one of those things. It's just, you know, it's, it's very difficult to maintain what we want in Wolfboro. We love the, we love our town, and we don't want it to be, you know, well, we just want people to be safe and be able to get where they want to get. And, and my thing is that anybody that question, you know, I don't know if anybody's been coming up Center Street trying to get out on Main, but it's impossible. You sit there, and you sit there, and you sit there. So it's definitely a problem that has to be solved. And I hope we do it thoughtfully and do it right. And part of it, part of me says, what's wrong with putting the light in with the state if the light didn't work? In other words, if traffic, even with a light, is back down, you know, back down to Western Autobody, then, then with the roundabout? I mean, I don't know. Is it a black and white issue? Thanks.
Dave, do you want to say something else?
Oh, go ahead. Let them talk.
When they're done.
I'll talk later.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Kathy Dragonfly. I've lived here a long time. I have a lot of some statements, some questions. The survey you spoke about only went to, you had 350 answers out of about 7,000 residents we have right now. That doesn't sound like a very good sampling to me. One thing I, I keep trying to bring up to people is that we are sucking the quaint right out of Wolfboro. People come here. People come here to get away from the Lincoln Tunnel, to get away from the Tobin Bridge. And if we start doing things like other communities, we're just going to become one of them. We're not going to be ourselves. That, and that really bothers me a lot. Tinker brought up this morning, where will the traffic go while this is going on? And how long will this go on? And the project costs, we, we don't have a clear figure on yet, which is a little scary, but it's going to cost the taxpayers, whether they're paying state taxes or local taxes, it's going to cost more. And I'm not sure we need to go more with all the massive, modern buildings that we've already put on, on South Main Street. I would like to see a cop at the top of Pickering Corner. If we have to hire one, there are very specific times, in the morning for an hour, in the afternoon for an hour, and in the summer on Friday nights. Or we don't need a rotary to accommodate all of that. And the bottom line is that this is not going to change the amount of traffic we have in town. This is just going to make it go funny. I don't see that it's going to help any. And anybody who's lived here for any length of time knows that we do not want a blinking light at the top. People should just slow down, take an extra five minutes to get to school or to get to town. It's not going to, it's not going to hurt anybody. And Brian just mentioned buses and the trucks coming through there, which are going to be really dangerous. But what about an ambulance or a police car when they're trying to get around the rotary? Where are these people going to go off the side of the road? There are just very few times I see any massive congestion there. And I used to commute into New York City, and this is a really ridiculous thing. You're talking 25, 30 cars in every direction. It's not worth spending more and more and more millions of dollars because it's not going to change anything. It's not going to accommodate anybody. So let's stop sucking the quaint out of Wolfboro.
My name is Roseanne Bell. I live in Wolfboro, and I'm here for the veterans. What will happen to the field of flags that we've put on Brewster Field for the past three years? It's a beautiful, beautiful memorial to all the veterans who have given. Normandy is tomorrow, the 80th year of Normandy. A roundabout will probably take a good portion of Brewster Field, and the flags will probably no longer be able to be put there. I understand the problems with traffic. I live here year-round. And what is it, three months out of the year might be a problem? How about the people who've given their lives? I just don't feel this is appropriate. Roundabouts are great if you're in Bermuda, maybe. Have you ever been there? They're hard to get around. How about the huge trucks that have to get around this roundabout? There's huge trucks that come up from Oscepee or going back down to Oscepee. How are they going to get around? I know you're going to have these side rant, you know, they're going to level it off. I don't see that here. It's going to ruin the flavor of this beautiful town that I've moved to. Thank you.
I, Norman A. Penn. I live on Lawando Lane. I spend a few months a year down in Florida. And the same proposal came to us down there. The actual government down there is an association that drives most of the things. And it was very interesting. We had a bridge coming downhill. There was two gas stations, a street between them, and another private lane off to the side. And if you think the, the hearings were, are, you know, against roundabouts here, down there it was like 50 times stronger, and people were incensed about it. Okay, so the roundabout goes in. And I'm just going to tell you, there's boat after boat on trailers that come down the bridge and go around the roundabout. There's tractor trailers. There's traffic all the time coming down there during, in that case, the winter months. And the roundabout has just done wonders for the traffic patterns down there. So I understand there's a lot of other issues here about trees and, and the, the memorials we've done for veterans. And I think that has to be addressed and respected 100%. But the concept that a roundabout is not something that is going to help things out is just not correct. When we originally came to the presentations and the Department of Transportation was here, they showed at different levels of traffic what stop signs did, what roundabouts did, what stoplights did, what blinking lights did. And in all cases, the roundabout moved the traffic through safely. So I just, I'm just going to bring up the fact that in many cases, people are afraid of something that they're not familiar with. And once they get it, I can tell you, down in that area, everybody loves a roundabout.
Kathy, can we get everybody who wants a chance to speak first? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tim Caravella. I live in Wolfboro on Eagle Trace. And I just want to say a couple of things. I'm not pro-roundabout, I'm not pro-light. Wolfboro has a problem. There's one way in, there's one way out. There's more people coming here every season. Since COVID, it's gotten worse because many people now hardly reside up here. None of these situations get any better. And I'll give you the traffic report that lady was asking for. Hop in my Jeep, 7 o'clock, any morning, try and get out of Clark Road with me. Fortunately, there are some nice people, and especially school bus drivers, who will stop and let me out. Hop in my Jeep Thursday or Friday night to try to go anywhere. Hop in my Jeep Saturday morning to try and go to Bradley's to get something. Roundabout, light, doesn't matter. Not going to solve it. One way in, one way out. The more people that come to Wolfboro, which everybody seems to want, yet everybody wants to keep Wolfboro, leave it alone, you can't have it both ways. So there has to be some kind of solution. And I can't for the life of me believe that the DOT did all these studies and hasn't come up with the best way to solve this is a roundabout. And I will go back to one statement that was made before about the Oscepee Roundabout. There's probably 100-plus plants in the Oscepee Roundabout. It is not stone. The outer part is stone. The inside is absolutely beautifully kept with plants. So that was wrongly stated previously. But I just wanted to state that the problem isn't a roundabout. It's not a light. It's that there's one way in and there's one way out, and it's never going to get any better as long as more people are coming to Wolfboro. Thank you.
There's a natural roundabout in the town of Wolfboro. The state has only looked at state roads. We need to look at our own infrastructure and our own roads. Turn off onto Pine Street, circle around, go up Pine Hill, and keep on going, bypass downtown. I imagine a lot of shopkeepers will hate to hear that, but most of those people don't stock in for a t-shirt anyway. So I would say, as one who's followed this since its inception with DOT, take us off the 10-year plan and send DOT back to Conken. Okay, we've been here about an hour. I'll take a few more. If you've got a couple who want to do a second time, and then I'd like to see if we could end this.
Evening, Madam Chairman. I think we know everyone's thoughts about the roundabout.
You want to just say your name?
John McDonald, Wolfboro. I want to talk a little bit about the 1.2 million that you want to spend to move the poles. It's my understanding, there's no safety concerns, but that'll allow two-way traffic at all times. And I don't know if the folks want to pay 1.2 million dollars to ensure that we have two-way traffic all time during the construction. And I guess I would ask that you maybe meet with the DOT and try to see if you can't hammer that amount down a little bit. I know myself and the other two representatives, Representative Patnaul and Representative Cordelli would be glad to sit down with you folks and, and with the DOT to see if we can't come up with something more reasonable. Because that 1.2, I think is, that's about 10% of the total project. And I think we could probably do it a little bit cheaper, maybe sit five minutes longer in the, in our cars where we wait to get through the construction. And please don't give up the money for the 10-year plan. That's $10 million. Thank you.
Okay, we had two, okay, one last, and then there are two who wanted to speak again. And if, if there's somebody else who wants, we would like to move on. We have a long agenda yet to go.
Hi, John Arupka, Wolfboro. Have we considered dispersing the traffic? For instance, I just talked to the DOT. They told me that Crescent Lake Avenue is a town road, not a state road. But if we had the traffic turn onto Crescent Lake Avenue, down, down the road, and then cross over on Leonard Street, you'd then get into town that way. So you'd have two ways into town instead of one. Just a thought.
Thank you. Anybody else quickly? If not, I'll go to seconds. Okay, one more over here.
Hi, I'm Erin Fallon. I live at 49th Center Street. I walk all over town with this guy next to me. I see the traffic as a pedestrian, and I see it living on 49th Center Street. Every day, every morning from 6:30 to 7:30, I see Center Street backed up Every day, every morning from 6:30 to 7:30, I see Center Street backed up the hill past my house. And I sit in my bedroom like I'm viewing something out of a Richard Scary book and watch with wonder. I know the traffic is bad because I walk in town. I know we have that limited access with 28 running right through town. So I know the handicaps. And also, as a pedestrian, I know the dangers of walking with the situation as it is now. Like Tony, I am very much in favor of a roundabout because it keeps traffic moving and it allows safe passage for other drivers and pedestrians.
Okay. I think Claude is the next one for a second, and then Kathy, and then if we can close, and then we can make comments.
Only because of the discussion, Claude Rossinger, Wolfboro, only because the discussion is going on, I'll just throw out a comment. And knowing the way state departments operate, which is to say, they get into habits of doing things, they keep doing them, I will simply point out that the European Union, under the edicts issued by their masters in Brussels, put in roundabouts across Europe 15 years ago. Little roads, big roads, everywhere. What are they doing now? Pulling them all out.
I just wanted to clarify that those 350 respondents got their questionnaires in their electric bills. So anybody who didn't own a house in this town, they weren't polled. So out of those 7,000 people, each house only got one way to respond. And also to follow up on Mr. Cavarelli, I think his name was, there are more than one way in and one way out. You can go down Main Street, you can go take a right. There's other ways you can go. One thing that I saw recently was out at Dow's Corner in Tuftonborough. And they have stop signs and they flash red, which I've never seen anyplace else, but they are quite effective. And just from my personal experience, I used to own the little red house across from Dunkin' Donuts. It's not a house, it's a business. But on a snowy day, the town of Wolfboro does not plow or sand Brickyard Hill because it's a town road. And I used to call all the time and say, "We need sand on Brickyard Hill." And they'd say, "Oh, the state does it." Well, by the time the state comes all the way up 28, it's often too late. So people can't get up Brickyard Hill. They can't, it's just an accident constantly in that way. And I'd rather see the town spend more time concentrating on that hill than they do all these other silly things. Maybe there's some way we can get some sort of a pass or agreement with the state that the town takes care of that road, not so much, just for the plowing and the sanding. It's really dangerous. That's all.
Okay. I'd like to close the public hearing at this point. Dave, I think you want to make some comments.
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments. As Lynda said earlier, we've been working on this thing for a good many years with DOT, with all types of meetings here and at the middle school. And the state has come up with these particular ideas for us. We as a board are not the ones who are going to make the decision on this. DOT is going to make the decision with your input and our input, which we've already given them a couple of times. The other thing that hasn't been taken into consideration cost-wise is, we looked at dropping the road down. We can't do that because our water mains would freeze. So now we have to bring the sidewalks up. And who's going to pay for that? Town of Wolfboro is. All the drainage that's associated with that, Town of Wolfboro is going to have to pay for a lot of that. Was mentioned about trees. We're probably going to have to, through our tree program, pay for a lot of the trees that are going to be put in. Electric company, Barry's been before us a couple of times in reference to what he's going to have to do just to temporarily move electric light poles to accommodate what the state wants to do. So this is not anything new. I know a lot of views and faces I've seen before at our meetings. And again, we've had plenty of them. And I'm glad to see people come out, or they do pay attention to what's happening. Sometimes we wonder when nobody's here at night when we're here. But there are other costs associated with this whole project that some of you haven't thought about yet. And originally, this program started from the Alton Town Line to Pickering Corner. Now they only have enough money to go from the high school to Pickering Corner. So what's going to happen with the rest of Route 28 at some point in time? So this isn't over. This is just starting. So, you know, whatever you people can, if you want to make some statements, make it to DOT, because they're the ones who are going to make the final decision on what happens here. We can only make suggestions, the same as you are tonight, to them. And they're going to give a presentation here in a little while. I think, Jim? Yes. So there'll be another overview of what they're going to do, only from the high school to Pickering Corner. So keep that in mind when you go to start talking to the state about this. You can talk to us, we're just going to transfer it to the state. So you might as well speak to them directly.
Linda?
I'm going to work down. I'll go Brad, and I'll come on down to you. Brad?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight and stuff, giving us your viewpoints. Definitely, the topic tonight seemed really centered around the roundabout issue on Pickering, top of Pickering Corner there. But I just want to have everybody keep in mind that this entire project, or the bulk of the project, is going to be for rebuilding Route 28, you know, from the high school down to Pickering Corner here. You know, I hope you all remember, the road's in pretty good shape right now because it's had some overlays on it. But after about a four- or five-year period, we start getting some serious potholes up through there. We hear a lot of complaints sitting here on the board when that does happen. So that's a good part of what's been driving this whole Route 28 corridor rebuild and getting into the 10-year plan. And that's also going to be the bulk of the money spent, even though the roundabouts are a pretty good chunk of money. Most of the money's going to be spent on rebuilding that road. And that's what's triggering the power line relocation for DOT's requirement to keep two lanes of traffic open the entire time while they're rebuilding the road. If any of you guys have traveled up to Osiphe from 28 North on 16 the last two or three years, where they've been rebuilding that section, it's going to be kind of similar to that. They have to shift the road over to keep two lanes moving at all times, and then shift it back. That's kind of the approach that we take on South Main Street here. So we do hear you, we do listen to you, take everything into consideration here. So do appreciate that. And I just want to remind everybody that it's the entire project that we're looking at here also. So, thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Linda. And thanks, everybody, for your comments. I joined the Route 28 Committee when I was a member of the Planning Board, and that was like, I don't know, seven years ago. We looked at, and Roger mentioned this, we looked at putting a traffic light at Pickering Corner, and that would have gobbled up parking spaces, and there was an outcry from people saying, "Don't do that, that's the wrong thing to do." We looked at a stop sign. We looked at a police officer, and there was a concern about, you know, police officers getting mowed down. We looked at flashing beacons. We looked at a roundabout. The original roundabout was going to require that Three Sisters was going to have to compromise access into their gas station. There was a conversation with Brewster Academy about maybe the main entrance of Brewster would terminate in the roundabout. There was a conversation about maybe we pick up the, what's the name of the house there?
Richardson's.
The Richardson House and move it. There was a conversation about the monument. So I put that in front of us just so that we, because I really do think that our prior Public Works Director and our town planner at the time, and the Hampshire Department of Transportation, did a kick-ass job trying to help us walk this thing through. And it would be just unfair to suggest that the staff work, at least at that point in time, had not been done. All right? I bristle at that kind of stuff because it had been done. I left here, and I came back, and I am astonished that we forgot the phone poles. That one just blows me away, that we, oops, 80 poles have to come down. And it astonishes me that we may have to deforestate, if that's the right word, Main Street. I learned that the night that I read the Arbor Day proclamation, saying that we were like one of the coolest things. And I want to thank Linda for asking me to read that the night that, you know, we found out we were going to take trees down. Those two things bother me a lot. The sidewalk situation bothers me a lot. The reduced scope of the project bothers me immensely. Initially, this was going to be from the Alton Line all the way here, and now it's the high school. And that thing gets desculped a lot. And I heard someone say they could offer to help, "Well, let's increase the scope. That would be a great thing for some of our folks that hang around down in Concord." Dave Ford, the prior highway person, said a very profound thing that's stuck in my head. He said, "You can't make traffic go away. You can only move it someplace else." And a roundabout out here on Pickering Corner is not going to work. It stalls because we have intersections down there that people like to walk across. So in the summertime, it's almost irrelevant what happens. Nine months out of the year, if you permit me, three months being summertime, and well, up here, two months being summertime, but for the balance of the year, the roundabout, at least from what I saw from the traffic work that the New Hampshire Department of Transportation shared with us, that thing works. I share Roger's response that says, "I'm not sure, I'm not sure down at the high school you're getting the benefit." It just doesn't make sense. Maybe some other curative has taken place down there. But as Dave Senical said, and I'll park it here, I think, you know, we don't know what this thing's going to cost. And so I think we've really got to get our heads around that before we get going here. But I'm kind of, you know, I'm kind of keen that up here, as long as we're not talking eminent domain and those kinds of heavy-handed government things that tend to be done, I think a roundabout up here makes sense. Thank you.
So I'm going to read a little bit from our minutes. So we had minutes from a meeting the other day, and the minute said that 1.2 million to move the poles, unless we move them twice, then it could be $2.1 million. So let's put that number in our head. And then the next piece says, "The state has $10 million for the project, but the town could be responsible for an additional $4 million for drainage sidewalks, and that could change by the 2028 construction season." We know how things have escalated in price. So could it be $6 million? Could it be $7 million? We just built a skating rink that's going to last us for 50 years. It doesn't have any traffic inside of it for $7 million. So I see that we can do some enhanced lines, we can have the state rebuild the road when we have a roundabout out here. So you have two curved roads that go around. They're still going the same place. We're not adding extra lanes. If we could add extra lanes, we can get rid of the traffic. But are we going to have a two-lane road coming in and a two-lane road coming out of Wolfboro like they have in Meredith? I don't think so. I think that would be a detriment to the town. I also believe that if you look back in history, and I've done some reading, that back in the late 1800s, they complained over and over again, if you read some of the old town meeting minutes, that there was too much traffic in downtown Wolfboro and there was no place to park your horses and buggies. I'm not making that up. So this is not a new problem. We're a resort town. Has anybody ever been to Newport? Has anybody ever been to Nantucket? They don't even have a way to drive there unless you put your car on a ferry. No matter where you go, we are a resort town. It's going to be this way in the summer. I take a deep breath, I go slow, and I stop for an ice cream. So.
I have one comment, and then we'll move on. We have had, in our CIP, over the last probably 15 years, money for Route 28. It started at $2 million, we've moved it up to $3 million. The money to do the sidewalks, the curbing, and the drainage, the town always knew that that was going to be on us. What we didn't know was the electric lines. So we have been planning and looking at this all the way through. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's important for us to hear from you and know how you feel about it. I am sure we will have many conversations as a board on where we go from here. Brian?
One more quick one. Should, while DOT's here, should we ask them about 109A? Anybody think so?
Ask them about 109. Yeah, but that's not the group that's here. The group that does 109 is District 3. Am I correct?
Correct.
And this is a different group that's here. Okay? All righty, we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the bulk vote.
Can I just say? Please. Close down.
We've already shut it.
Sir, I think that it may be a late, as far as roundabouts, but I understand.
Board? Where are we, board?
We got that coming up again on the new business.
We're going to take public, I wasn't going to take public comment on the new business. I want to get it. Board, I need a direction.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
All right, there you go.
Okay. This roundabout thing. Your name, sir? Scott Duchamp, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. I wish I would have heard what was going on here, but as far as the roundabout, it's going to be a nightmare. The one over in Osiphe, what's going to happen here is, when people get into that circle coming from the south, the cars are going to be right bumper to bumper, and there's no way that anybody coming up the hill is going to have a snowball chance in hell to get into, to go into that circle. It happens over in Osiphe, on the Osiphe Traffic Circle, and that thing's huge. Once there's like five or six or seven cars coming into that, and they're all going in at the same time, you have to wait. So that's one thing. It's going to be, it's a terrible idea. And then you think about all the trucks and everything, they're going to have to get around that. If they would just put a damn traffic light up there, that's what you need. Because the problem is, if half the people that come up on that hill and they want to turn left, they do not, the people that got their blinker on going down over the hill, the people are still sitting there, and they're not smart enough to know to go. So you need a traffic light. The roundabout's going to be a terrible idea. So, you know.
Okay.
And as far as 109A, the town, the state needs to fix the damn road. Instead of spending millions of dollars out here, wasting our taxpayers' money and going to cause more of a problem like they do every project they do, they need to fix 109A.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Bulk vote. Bulk vote. I would like to remove from the bulk vote under C1, 264 South Main Street, and speak to that separately. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, so I made it and Brad seconded it to remove that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the other one I would like to remove is the 2024 payment in lieu of taxes for Hearthstone Homes. I would like to move that to 5D. Derek Brown is not going to be able to come tonight and that will be a longer discussion.
So moved.
Okay, poll moved.
Second.
Brian, second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Let's see if we can keep on going even though we have no noise here. So let's do the bulk vote minus those two items. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Who said that? Brian? Okay, I've got Brian and then Brad. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Now I'd like to do C1. The reason I removed that, I wanted to talk about the fact that this is the, where the food pantry is and the Lord &amp; Taylor Clothing Store, they applied in 2023 as a religious exemption. They didn't fit a religious exemption, but if they had applied under a charitable exemption, they would have made it. And so I'm wondering whether the board would be willing to just approve this, this year because it was just an error.
So moved.
Oh, Brian, okay. Does anybody want to give, I'll take the second. Any further discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. Okay, we got through the bulk vote here. We have no appointments. 5A, New Hampshire DOT Route 28. Do we have, are they still here or did they leave with everybody else? Come on up.
Guy with the tie.
Okay.
Biology.
All right, here we go.
Good evening. Just kind of get set up here for a sec. Everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, well, thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us to come and speak and, and hear comment tonight. I think it's really important for the process and essentially today, we are really here to kind of clear up some of the misconceptions that might be articulated throughout the community, kind of share what we would expect for, excuse me, make sure I clear some room and some notes.
And can you just give us your name and your title?
I'm sorry, I'm out of chair.
No problem.
Okay, so my name is Jason Ayad. I'm the New Hampshire DOT Project Manager. I'm fortunate to have our consulting project manager here as well, Dave McNamara, and he will be here for technical content in case there are specific questions. But again, I do appreciate the opportunity to kind of come and speak and then hear everybody's thoughts regarding the process. It is not a short process to get a transportation process through, or project through the federal process as well as the state process. And again, I think that that's probably some of it is just the timing of where we are today and what we're asking the community to kind of make a decision on. So again, the first thing I did bring on agenda, I wanted to kind of, originally, when we asked to come and speak to the community, it was really more about walking through what we heard for public comment based on how things have rolled out over the last couple months. I think it's more important now to kind of share with you what we're specifically asking for, how that is probably different than the absolute decision of what goes in, but more important so that we can plan and walk through really the historic process that we're up against. There are significant amount of historic properties, more so than any other project that my environmental manager has worked on before. There's 50 plus properties that have potential significance. We have the Brewster Historic District and I'm probably forgetting some other things and I apologize for that, but we haven't even started the consulting party in the Section 106 process. That next process could take us almost a year, which is why we kind of want to identify what the maximum extent of the potential impacts are. And there's a number of considerations that go into that. It doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're building, but what we're going to permit with the federal government to be able to work in, work into the final design process and start and at least receive funding for final design, the right of way and construction dollars. At this point in time, we only have approvals for preliminary design. So that's really kind of the, the main ask of, of the Board of Selectment tonight is we're going to identify, I kind of want to walk through some of the construction impacts. And again, Dave is here tonight to help me articulate well why we chose what we did. But we kind of want to make sure that what we're showing today is something that at the end of the project, that our impacts could live within. Okay? It is not necessarily what we're going to build. As, as everyone's aware, our project budget is less than what we're expecting for potential impacts up here. But I, I think it's important for us to be able to navigate the federal process with an understanding of what those maximum impacts could be involving utilities, involving drainage, construction of the roadway, considering traffic control impacts for us to be able to sort of walk through. So I think, again, that's why we're here tonight. We're here to kind of hopefully make a decision so that we can navigate the federal process very successfully. Case in point, I want to give an example of what happens if we don't, we actually don't permit the maximum impacts now and then we have to go back. And I got a slide later to kind of walk through that. So really, that's the, that's the big thing. I will share cost, anticipated schedule based on today, assuming we have a decision and kind of what we're up against.
Linda, someone asked if we could dim the lights.
Oh.
You're right over there. Why don't you just?
Which one?
Just keep flicking switches.
Yeah, we'll tell you when you've got it.
Just flick switches. You heard a bingo.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Fantastic.
Get the popcorn machine.
Okay. So all of our project information, we've had a number of slides, I'm, I'm sorry, a number of meetings, I'm going to walk through kind of what we have done to date since I've been part of and really since we had approval to begin preliminary engineering. All of the information that we have presented to the community to date is posted to the website. It includes videos, plans, the public informational surveys that we put out to the town. There's a number of meetings that we have participated in and I think that was one of the, kind of the guiding principles that the previous project manager, Don Leifert, had shared with us and me stepping into this role, that it's really important for a project with significant impacts to be able to have that participation process. All right, so here's where we are. This is our project development process. It's basically broken up into two phases in engineering, preliminary and final. Again, we're not able to move to final until federal highway accepts really what we have for impacts and if we have satisfied all the National Environmental Policy Act's requirements to make sure that we've got the documentation for the environmental and the cultural resources or the national and cultural resources. And in our case with, within the state of New Hampshire, we also have the right of way process and part of our, our project development process is to basically go to a public hearing, a state public hearing, to make sure that the project has need and there's, it's necessary to start to begin to acquire rights. The very formal process that, that we initiate, the public hearing process right now is taking us about a year once we initiate it. I have not initiated it because I don't have community support moving forward at this time. So again, it's about nine months to schedule a public hearing. Once I have a public hearing, there's the comment period afterwards, usually 10 days, and then it can take anywhere from three to six or more months in order to facilitate responses and then schedule the follow up to the public hearing, which is the finding of necessity, which, which is what we do. It can take us an extensive period of time. Yes, sir.
Can I ask questions as we go? Quick ones?
As long as they're quick.
Yeah, like, did you, what, explain to people what kind of traffic studies you've done.
Oh, absolutely. I can now walk through that. So we have, let me, right now, as far as what we've done, we have conducted traffic counts along the roadway as well as at the intersections of study. And I kind of want to walk through why we studied what we did in a second, but we've, we've done traffic counts, we hired Stan Tech, the engineer, to look at the, the traffic modeling associated with the existing, which I'll have Dave speak to that. We've also looked at what the design year would be 20 years from now or from when we think it's going to be constructed more precisely. And we've looked at that. So those are the type of modeling. When we came to the February 16th Public Informational Meeting, we showcased some of the, the visualizations that Stan Tech provided at the specific intersection. The project as a whole was really, at the request of the community, was not to add capacity of the roadway. It was really to focus on reconstruction of the roadway to improve drainage and sidewalks that are an issue today. And then kind of the, the value add, if we could, was the intersections of McManus and Pickering. So we have studied the intersections from a traffic standpoint, but there really isn't capacity within the two lane roadway for the summertime traffic and nor was that the desire of the, the community when we were given the project. And I'll kind of walk through that in a, in a second as far as how the project came to be too. That's a great question. And as far as the specifics, we can certainly bring up some information or I can bring Dave up at the end of the, at the end of the, my presentation. Any other thoughts before I continue? Okay, so I, I might have lost my train of thought, but the public hearing process itself can take anywhere from 12 to 18 months for us to be able to secure that. At the conclusion of the public hearing process, that 12 to 18 months, that's when we really get approval from the, the Federal Highway Administration with our National Environmental Policy Act approval to move into final design. So I'm, that, just to kind of let people know what we're sort of up against, we got about 12 to 18 months for the public hearing and federal highway approvals, then we can begin final engineering, which allows us to basically go from essentially 30% design to 60% design. That's when we traditionally give all of our impacts to utility companies to start planning. I did take the opportunity in this, understanding that Wolfborough Electric is, is part of the, the community. It's not a private utility in terms of they have much larger resources. We understood that. We brought those impacts much, much earlier in the process than typically would happen. So I, I do want to put a little bit of fairness on the department staff that, that kind of put this out to Wolfborough Electric and kind of share with everybody that the idea with utility relocations was to understand what it could be and what, really, what the community could live with as far as construction impacts. The, I think it was said really well by the board that the utility relocations are necessary to maintain two lanes of traffic. Two lanes of traffic are probably the most efficient way to build this roadway. We could do one lane of traffic. However, that's going to lengthen the duration of the construction period. It's going to increase backups during construction and we're going to have a number of concerns. So I think, again, thinking from a maximum extent practical and thinking about all of the, the potential impacts, it's much smarter in my opinion, and, and I'm here as an advisor, right? This is the community's project. I'm here as an advisor on how we navigate the process. If we plan for the worst and then over the duration of the final design that we can dial in what the actual impacts are, we're much more successful. If we plan for the absolute minimum and then we, we go and we start adding in temporary impacts, temporary impacts associated with utility relocations, we could delay the project another year to two or more. Okay, so I want to kind of be clear of why we've, we've chosen the preferred alternative, but also, you know, we need to navigate the federal process and all of this takes time. So once we have utility relocations and we start that, that could be anywhere from, if it's really easy, six to 12 months. We're not envisioning underground relocations through the proposed, but if there were, there, we've got to add that into time. And then the environmental permitting itself can take at least a year. Now, some of these overlap. Don't, it's not all waterfall schedule where everything adds up and now we're looking at a 10-year design schedule, but these are the durations that we have to expect. And lastly, the biggest one, I cannot look to acquire any easements, any rights to construct temporarily or even permanently until I have my federal highway certification and approval. And we're expecting it could be anywhere from two to three years to acquire all the rights before we can begin construction. Again, there's some overlap there. The reason is there's a, there's over 120 parcels that potentially could be impacted. And they could be short duration construction impacts or they could be permanent like we have with the BMPs on Huggins Hospital. So I just, it, it takes time, especially with a large impactful project like this one, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware of it. So the, the more flexible that we can be in our approach early on, the more successful we will be in advertising this project on time. All right. Any questions on schedule? I'll, I'll hit it again at the very end, but I just want to make sure that people are aware of what, what we're up against. All right. So as far as public involvement, we have been, I, I think this is a, for the most part, it's a high impact project for us. We know we have a large number of parcels. Now, you know, we brought to the forefront the utility relocations, which could probably impact more. We have water quality needs that we need to understand. So what, really under the advisement of the previous project manager, we, we created a public involvement plan. I kind of laid out really the, the vision that the community wanted and how the project came about. We, and it sorted it back up even further, the towns were working on this a considerable amount of time. I want to recognize all of that work that has been done since 2007 that I'm aware of and I'm sure before that, the community has been looking at this section of roadway to improve. It sounds like from historic meeting notes, it's probably been even further, further behind that. The project itself came into the tenure plan in 2017. There, at that time when it came in, there was only construction dollars for 2024. Yes, we're in 2024 now. But at that time, there was, there was no PE and right of way money associated with that. In 2019, the tenure plan added PE and right of way. So in 2020, essentially, we were able to obligate preliminary engineering funds to begin working on that. This was all started with the steering committee that the community put forward between 2010 and 2017. They provided a, a letter of support and guidance on where this project should be steered, which I think many of the select board members here actually signed it and addressed it to, to Don Leifert, the previous PM. So I want to, like how we started initially, and I think it's really important, the enhanced intersection design at Pickering Corner was preferred. We, the, I'll back up, sorry. The community broke it up into four segments, from the Alton Town Line, Segment 1 up to, to Middleton, Middleton to, through into the Rust Pond Segment. We had Segment 3, which was, I'm going to call Kingswood through Kingswood Golf Club. And then the fourth segment was, you know, really from Huggins through Pickering Corner. That was pretty important. That was kind of the idea, the initial ideas and onset of the, the project. We wanted to, to utilize as much as possible. I came to the department in 2019. My first assignment was really to, to verify what the costs were. The entire cost of that three mile segment was in excess of $20 million and the tenure plan at the time only had $7 million associated with that. We did not overall do a very good job putting projects into the tenure plan before 2019 and identify what the potential scope was. A lot of projects are underestimated. This is a significant project. We brought early on this challenge of not having enough money. And so we put out to the community, leaders at the time was to which areas could we focus on, given the amount of funds that we had, which were only $7 million. We recognized that the project's underfunded. And then in 2021, we had the opportunity to gain additional funds and I'll share that later. We added another three plus million dollars to support what we had. So we have $11.5 million today for this project through the tenure fund. All right? So we recognized the fact that there were a lot of decisions made and a lot of things that we needed to, to really focus on, and we couldn't have done that without the creation of the Project Advisor Committee. It was essentially the, the folks that served on the steering committee. We asked many of them. We asked a few more other stakeholders that were probably knew, Brewster was on it before. before. I know Huggins Hospital, it may have been on it before, but they're certainly a part of the, the project advisory. We had Kingswood School District, really important players on the use and, and need within the corridor. So we do, we've had six project advisory committee meetings, and I'm going to walk through what we did in a second. We've had two public informational meetings. Those are meetings hosted by the department here in February, and I'll walk through those. In addition to that, out of the PAC meeting, we identified that the property impacts around Pickering were really, really important for us to investigate. So we had additional stakeholder meetings. It ended up being two with the Three Sisters and the Corner Store, but we also had stakeholder meeting with Huggins Hospital and Wolfboro Electric. I'm going to consider a stakeholder meeting because we brought that information sooner to the community within the process. So again, the, the Three Sisters and the Corner Store stakeholder meetings were in 2022. We kind of walked through the different impacts, and what we learned out of those stakeholder meetings was the fact that we needed to make sure that the businesses remain viable by not taking parking, by not having impacts, think about access and egress out of the, the gas stations in order for deliveries, more important, but also all of, all of the constituents of, of Wolfboro.
Now, Linda, should we, do they need to readdress that? Because those now are different owners.
We just looked at the traffic. So before, you couldn't make deliveries if we used one roundabout. So the flow that you showed us, they took into consideration whether they can go in and out of those gas stations.
Well, I'm just wondering if they need to meet with the new, with new stakeholders because there are new owners of those two buildings.
That's up to them.
Yeah, and, and honestly, we'll have the opportunities to be able to do that. I, I wasn't aware that both properties have exchanged hands, but I was aware of a potential during, prior to the acquisition. So we had discussed really all of the alternatives at the time, but we can certainly take the other opportunity. Again, the process isn't over yet. This is really just the start so that we can really engage the Section 106 process and tap into the consulting parties and the potential impacts of the historic properties. So absolutely, in the future, I don't think it's really going to be a problem. I think we've got a fantastic PAC group that we've been able to bring in different elements that are, that really help the process. So just to kind of give everybody a sense of the project advisory committee, we've had six to date. They've been fairly well spaced. And I think we've, we've solved a number of different issues for us to kind of get a handle on, not necessarily solve them within the solution that, that we're presenting tonight, but certainly we've identified what that constraint would be, the criteria associated with it. There are a number of individuals on, the participants, we've opened it up for additional guests to come in, and I think we've had some fantastic conversations with the watershed associations that really kind of integrated the water quality designs that, that you see in the preferred alternative. We've identified what the purpose, we, we made sure that the purpose and need statement, which is really important for us to gain federal approvals, was in line with the vision statements that were identified within the, the community steering committee. And really, you know, ultimately, the whole purpose of the project advisory committee is so that we can flush out some of the challenges ahead of the public informational meeting. And it's been, in my opinion, it's been fairly successful to date. I think the first meeting that we really met was kind of that data, data gathering, and we focused on speed. And coming out of that first meeting, we initiated a, a traffic speed study and the speed zones changed. There was a little bit of a process there, probably a couple of years before, but our Bureau of Traffic initiated the traffic speed study. We, uh, we did evaluate it through, we've got to not only do the data collection on that and check what speeds are, but then they've got to weigh it up, weigh it against the manual uniform traffic control devices. And ultimately, the state traffic engineer agreed with the study that we should uniform the speed zones, and they changed. There were four of them before, and now we have two. So I think that, that was, you know, being able to, to go to the, the PAC and, and identify what the issues are, and if we can solve them within the existing condition, it might not be something that we necessarily need to invent for the, the preferred alternative. I already talked about the vision and, and purpose, but I, I kind of, like, basically it was vetting what the, the goals of, of the project are. I just want to, this project is your project. It's not the DOT's project. It is part of the tenure plan. The, the community brought the project forward. We're administering it through the federal process because it has federal funds, but ultimately, it's your project. We can shape it as we need to. I think ultimately, we do need to make decisions to be able to navigate the next steps well to be successful and build some, build. You know, the last thing that anybody wants to do is keep delaying and kicking this down the road. Again, I kind of hit on all of that. So we had two public informational workshops. I thought that they were very well attended. This is an active community. It was fantastic. We had over 60 attendees. The over part is probably our staff. And then last August, we, we met and we had over 70 attendees. We initiated a first public input survey in February, just to kind of get a sense of where we, where we were and what the issues were. But we also wanted to narrow down the alternatives because it's quite costly to have Stan Tech, or any consultant, sorry. But to have any consultant go through and continue to study and design, we wanted to kind of narrow down what the community wanted. So we had a, a number of issues raised. We, we kind of looked at narrowing down a couple of different alternatives. It seemed like at the time, in February, that, that the community was still open to seeing what we could do to improve flow, even though the goal of the project wasn't to improve capacity, it was really to improve, I'm going to call it, access, access management throughout the corridor. And I think the biggest thing that we heard, to be honest with you, is the corridor between McManus and Pickering Corner, the corridor is widely supported. Right? The, the community wants us to upgrade the roadway. They want to upgrade the, the drainage, improve water quality, and then, and mostly improve the sidewalks that are an issue in the winter time and, and during rain events. And I think, I do want to recognize that the, the public input surveys are a tool. It's not an end-all. We had, in, in my opinion, we don't typically get, especially for intersection projects and corridor projects, we don't get a lot of responses. To 350 is pretty good for the department. Whether it represents the community's interest, I think that's why we have all of the other meetings. We, you know, we engage with the PAC. We have, you know, we come to the select board and ask for those opinions. It is a piece of the puzzle. It's not necessarily the solution that's being offered. But I think generally, it was, uh, well, well-supported overall that it was a good meeting. And I, I kind of think that that's attributed to the, the staff that supports the project.
So you just mentioned upgrading the drainage and the sidewalks, but that would be something that would be the town's responsibility, wouldn't it?
I'd love to clarify that because I think that's a huge misconception that's being put forward.
All right.
And, and I'll walk through that. I think I get back to the plan as far as what we're going to do. So why, why did we select the preferred alternative? Again, I, I'd love to have Stan Tech come up if there's specific questions. It's really decided by the alternatives analysis that we showcased in February and March. It integrates the public involvement in all the meetings between the PAC, the stakeholders. It incorporates the data collection, the traffic studies, the engineering analysis, the horizontal and, and vertical, which is kind of how we came up with where the road should be and where the sidewalks and what elevation the sidewalk should be. It, it came up with allowances for what the buffer space between the roadway and the sidewalk should be so that we could think about trees and utilities and, and some of those aspects. It came up with the shoulder width. I know that was something that the community put forward. Having some type of, having additional width within the shoulders is really important to improve bicyclist access throughout the corridor. Today, we have, you know, one to two-foot shoulders, and the proposal is five-foot shoulders. And again, that came through the steering committee, but that's, that's really also part of the engineering analysis to understand what the width of the roadway construction might need to be. The preferred alternative, and this is the next step, is used to document and tally all the natural and cultural resource impacted. And we need to document that. We need to share it with our federal and state agencies, and then we need to basically write up our environmental document with support of our consulting parties, our state historic preservation officer, which honestly, the cultural resources is going to be the most significant effort that we have going forward. And then the preferred alternative uses to establish the right-of-way and easements required. Again, those are preliminary easements and preliminary right-of-way. We have a number of discussions on how we handle what our existing prescriptive right-of-way is. We don't own it outright. We have the right to maintain it, but we might have some additional width because of the additional shoulders, sidewalk upgrades, crossing areas, and all of that that goes into the, the planning of a successful project. And ultimately, we're going to use a preferred alternative to advance to this New Hampshire State public hearing, which is, and, you know, specifically, it's the process outline and approved and supported by the governor and council such that, that we could acquire the right to, to that right-of-way, that easement, whether it's temporary or permanent. So that's, that's why the preferred alternative is important. And I just want to kind of make sure that everybody's understanding, we're going to use that to identify what the potential impacts are. We haven't solved what those impacts are. Most of the impacts are going to be to cultural resources, and therefore, we have a process designed for it so that we can make sure that we vet it out, whether it's supportive. And in some cases, it may not be supportive enough that we could implement that solution. So again, we still have a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm going to keep saying that. As far as the corridor, again, I think the biggest thing that, that I can take away from what the work that the, the town did is that we were not evaluating traffic capacity for the corridor. We are not adding lanes. So we are, you know, the main reason the project came in was to really look at shoulder widens to promote bicycle use, but really, it was the roadway reconstruction, the issues that we have with the, the concrete slab, improve the rideability, improve the pavement condition, improve the drainage. And then the other things that came out of really the, the data collection and the work that town did is really identifying pedestrian crossings and how we want to promote safe access back and forth across South Main Street, as well as identifying where the crossings could be. And, and some of that is within the preferred alternative, but the footprint is big enough that we have other options. And, and lastly, I think what we have integrated into the purpose and need to make sure that we satisfy the main concern, and the community has done a fantastic job through the watershed associations to identify what those goals are. I know there's watershed management plans associated with each one of the, the lakes. We need to make sure that our, our roadway improvements will be, and will satisfy DES goals, but also incorporate that. So we, we do have a memorandum agreement with New Hampshire DES that if we're going to add pavement, that we're going to deal with that runoff and look at water quality. So I think it's important that we have integrated it into the purpose and need, and that helps us with the, the funding for these improvements. And as far as the intersections, the intersections were really just an ask of the community. You, you evaluated a lot of different ideas. There was, again, I, I think, coming out of your corridor study, the enhanced intersection design was the preferred. The letter to the, the department asked us to evaluate a mini roundabout, or a roundabout design that limited impact to the gas station. That's what we've done, and that's what we've shown. It, it also said a signalized intersection is not preferred. We chose to reevaluate that just to make sure everybody was understanding of what the impacts are. From an operation standpoint, I don't think anybody's going to argue with many of the sentiments. What we would make sure that we want to make, that, that people understand is the impacts associated with a signal. And I think the board has already iterated that as far as the parking, but I think most importantly is the mast arms, the foundations associated with the mast arms, the cabinets. You know, many of those are going to possibly be adverse effects to the Richardson House and Brewster, and there's more impacts associated with, with the signal than necessarily the roundabout that we offered. So that's why we chose to reduce the signal from further consideration. The town had already done that between 2010 and 2018. We only sort of added that to make sure that we understood what the impacts are. There will be temporary impacts during construction that will affect both gas stations if you put signals, and we can kind of walk through later as far as what that layout might look like, but if you're not moving the curb line and you need to put a cabinet and you need to put a mast arm someplace, it's probably going to go in the sidewalk. We push the sidewalk back, and now we're impacting parking. And that's where some of the considerations that our engineers put forward, and I think there was value in reevaluating it because it does impact more significantly. And then you think about, from a cultural resource, and I appreciate that Mr. Steer, Mr. Duchesne's here, his consulting parties, but if they, you know, if you think about the visual impacts of a mast arm and a traffic light on some of those historic properties, it would be a, probably a lengthy discussion when we go through the Section 106 process. So anyway, I don't want to read all the bullets, but it was certainly something that we were asked to do, and I think I'm, I'm getting a little long-winded. I'll, I'll try to simplify some of this as we go through. Certainly, parking, safe pedestrian crossings, one of the, the values in a roundabout offers an additional pedestrian crossing. One of the things we heard through the PAC and even the first public informational was safe pedestrian crossings through the intersection area. Understand that there's a, an RFB, rectangular flashing, rapid flashing beacon that Brewster put in, but there was a, a desire at the time when we went through some of that early public outreach that we should improve the number of, sorry, improve the location and also potentially the number of pedestrian crossings that we saw. Improve traffic flow. I think everybody understood that during the summer months, we are not going to solve the traffic issue. We are not going to do it. What we can do is we can improve access and flow in those off-peak periods for the other nine months of the year or eight months of the year now, where, where we do see potential issues with the stop. So we did look at the no build, the minimum build, which really does nothing outside of what you have today. We have the enhanced striping, which is what you asked us to do, adding a left turn lane. We looked at an all-way stop, and nobody supported that coming out of the February information. And of course, we looked at the signal area, talked about, and obviously, the roundabout is what you saw on the preferred alternative. We did evaluate it. We evaluated all of them. We heard all of the categories that we waited against either did require a study or required a meeting for us to walk through. And I think that was the value that we, that we brought in with our, our in-house design team as well as our consulting team in order to be, basically mean that. But all of the categories were something that the PAC, the project advisory committee or the steering committee asked us to evaluate as we were going through the process. It's just not limited to traffic operations or really a biasness from the department. These were the results of the public opinion survey. I, we, I don't want to walk through all of them. There's about 131 pages of a PDF that are posted to the website. I think it would be valuable for, for those that are interested just to kind of walk through some of the comments that, that people put on why a roundabout, why enhanced striping, or why do nothing? And there's value to all of that, and I want to make sure that people understand that. So we did do that, and we can walk through it if the board desires. Oops, I went too far. These were the advantages that have been really walked through. The location of the, the smaller diameter roundabout that we evaluated was specifically located to avoid any parking. The orange areas up on the screen, and I wish, I'm going to probably mess things up here. No, I don't have a pointer, but there's some orange areas, if you could tell the difference, behind the sidewalk. That's, that's really created space, and then you can kind of see the traffic on how we were proposing that people would access Corner Store and Three Sisters. It does impact the monument. I think it's a valuable comment and something that if this, this is able to move forward, then we would certainly consider what that impact is on the monument and the, the other monuments on Brewster. But it, it's much less of an impact than the previous version that came out of the corridor study, and I want to kind of recognize that. And, you know, again, we were trying to make sure that we preserved access, and we didn't reduce on-street parking outside of these limits, which really, it's a reduction in lane width on Center Street and 109 coming up from, from Wunisaki. All right, so talked, again, I'm being a little long-winded. One of the things that we did is kind of look at, or have Stan Tech go through and come up with a rendering of what it would look like because it would be valuable. So if I had the pointer, you could see on the right-hand side, you see the trees in front of the Richardson House. The monument is right there because we don't have foliage. You can see on the cues on Center Street, and then hopefully, you can tell the difference with the compact roundabout. So we do, it does impact the monument. It does impact a tree. You can kind of see how the Center Street and... You can kind of see how the Center Street and 28 South Main Street, as well as South Main Street heading down to the lake, are kind of all in the same location. We preserve the monuments right there by the crossing on the northern leg because you're looking, you're really looking south with the Richardson House right there. One of the things that Brewster asked us to do was think about an alternate access to Academy Drive and really eliminate that driveway, and that's something that is supportive, so we showed that as well. And so of probably the potential impacts for a larger diameter roundabout, we think that these are modest impacts. And again, the idea of the preferred alternative that we're adding is this would be the greatest impact that we could then navigate through the NEPA. If we choose not to do any intersection improvements, we can certainly truncate it. We haven't lost any time with the federal process, and we can move forward.
Linda, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
The Academy Drive access, that was at some point proposed to terminate in the roundabout. Is that off the table?
It's not off the table. This is a concept, just a concept.
Did Brewster take it off the table?
Brewster took it off the table. Well, after we were talking for a while, yes, they kept their entrance where it is right now.
Initially, just for clarity for folks, the theory was to Brewster access terminate right into the roundabout, and I think on second or third thought, they said, nope.
No.
Okay, got it.
No, and we did not study that because through the steering committee up to 2017, that wasn't supportive. So I apologize, I wasn't necessarily thinking about, there was the four-legged roundabout that was studied and dismissed.
Yeah.
Yes. All right. And this is a side-by-side, just for, and these will be available on our website as well afterwards for those that are interested to kind of see what it would do. I think it was said before, this roundabout is traversable across the median, which is the other texture. I'll just bring it back. That allows the larger vehicles to maneuver, that's buses, logging trucks, and those type of vehicles. The idea is that it does have some reveal such that vehicles would navigate the roundabout and see that texture difference.
So can you go back to the two side-by-side?
Oh, yes, sir.
I noticed that there's more cars in the picture of the way it is now than in the picture of where the roundabout is. Is that by accident?
Right.
Well done. I'll skip that. I think that it's an overlay of the rendering. We do have a visualization of the actual roundabouts through, and it does have improved flow, which is from an access standpoint was why, and again, from an engineering perspective, why it was preferred. All right. And we did the same thing for McManus and Pleasant Valley. Understand that really, they did in the corridor study that the town conducted, did evaluate multiple roundabouts at McManus and Pleasant Valley. Ultimately, I think the preferred recommendation coming to the department was improving the intersection alignment with Pleasant Valley, but it was not 100% clear with the McManus intersection. So we, you know, as part of the intersection and the operations between the two, we felt it was important to evaluate McManus. We did look at the no build, not doing anything, a minimum build, enhanced striping, and always stop condition as well. And I think I want to go back to one of the earlier conversations about speed that we had with the project advisor committee, and also looking to create that Main Street, that downtown feel. And in order to do that, you need to have really more of an abrupt, you know, it can be a gateway sign, it can be an arch. Many communities have done that, but if you're looking for something different, this is an option. I'm not saying that we need to do it. Certainly, it's got more impact, and I'd like to be able to take that forward through the NEPA process. It probably impacts the historic resource, which is the house, I'm going to call it on McManus, but there's Stonewall in front of McManus and South Main Street, and we would have to sort of navigate through that. We may not be able to do it, but I'd like to be able to show that if the board supports it. And again, it adds, I think we heard from speed, so there's a character change. You would have a defined definition. We also heard about speed issues in front of Kingswood Golf Club. Originally, we did not have a crosswalk there, but we still don't have a crosswalk in the existing condition, but there was a concern because there was a fatality at one time, and we were looking to address the speed for that section of roadway. And so I think that was an early discussion, and it probably hasn't really been refreshed through our process, but I do want to make sure that everybody's aware that it was an option to show speed reduction.
Is it still open for discussion? I remember that Wolfboro PD was asked to provide crash data at the crossing, and there was some early conversation about a cut-and-cover tunnel or some feature down there to deal with that. Is that information been given to you for planning out?
So I don't, that was a while ago.
The numbers were impressive. I shouldn't say impressive. The numbers were not good.
Correct, correct. And there was a crash recently at the intersection, so I don't have the 23 numbers. We certainly can refresh them as we go through the final steps of our NEPA analysis. We did reach out to the police department. I believe we received some crash reports. It's in a database. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
All right, as long as you got it. All right, good. Thank you.
They were helpful at the time. I know that they had to go through the offices to get some of that crash data.
And you did change the way they come across at the golf course. Wasn't they coming at an angle, and now you have more squared to kind of?
Yeah, squared off a little bit.
Yeah, and that we were not going to make a crosswalk there because there were going to be cars coming across. Am I correct?
I can walk through. We did change the alignment. It would require an easement on private property in order to do that. It's something that we'd like to take forward in the NEPA process. It may not necessarily work out through the right-of-way process, but it's certainly something that we saw improvement by making it perpendicular and then cleaning up the sightlines such that people are more aware that there's a crossing there. Yes?
There are less severe accidents at McManus Road, but when you have 300 inexperienced drivers, I have two teenagers that lived in my house that both were rear-ended, either going to or leaving school. So there's lots of fender benders there, but not lots of serious accidents.
And it's probably during school hours attributed to the lower speeds.
Yeah, when they're going, when they're getting in and when they're getting out.
And I believe the crash data that we had is very consistent with intersection-type crashes with higher volumes at certain times. So it made sense to us. And again, a roundabout is going to change the angle of the crashes, it's going to improve safety from a vehicle standpoint. It added another crossing to kind of help with the flow of pedestrians through to the schools. So those were kind of some of the reasons why we had it. And again, it's got a bigger impact, doesn't necessarily mean that we're tied to it at this point, and I'll get to that in a second.
One more?
Yeah.
So you mentioned earlier the mid-block crossings that we had said we want more mid-block crossings, and I dropped off the page with the decision or with the conclusion as to how we would deal with that. And for mid-block crossings, that's from Brewster students and for people heading down by the hospital to be able to cross the road. And I think state DOT said you can't have mid-block crossings, or we don't support those, or we don't.
I think the other one was at the library.
Did that get sorted in the library? Did that get sorted out?
I'll qualify some of it. So the department doesn't support mid-block crossings in speed zones 40 miles an hour greater. So that was part of the discussion. An earlier discussion was to have uniform crossing treatments throughout the corridor, and I think that was a real early discussion about having those rapid flashing beacons at every single crossing. I think if we have corridor-defining segments, Bureau of Traffic is open to looking at, you know, having one at the beginning, especially if they're closer together. So I think we've come a long way because of the conversations we've had with the PAC and bringing our Bureau of Traffic.
So we can have a conversation about that.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's not done, and I think it all fits within the footprint that we have proposed. And that's, in my opinion, that's the next step, that's the final design, and one of the ideas where we would like to use the PAC moving forward in final design to talk about the treatments for the sidewalk and the crossings and, you know, all those fine-tuned details that we need in the next step, that's what we would love to use the PAC for.
And just for the benefit of the public, we had a little bit of a, we had actually the head of DOT come up because as we were redoing Center Street, there was a discussion about crossings at the Wright Museum or crossings down at the flower shop, and it was one of these pick one, you can't get two, and we all felt well we wanted to. So as long as we can have the conversation about mid-block crossings for the students and for the people going to the library, hospital area on this corridor, that's probably a good thing to do, whether we decide to do it or not later, but good to do.
No, I think all of the work that the town did between 2010 and 2017 is not unnoticed. That's all work that we were able to progress the preliminary design even faster, and I'm sure there's a joke in there someplace with the transportation project, but the idea, right, that all of this, all of the work that you did helped us get that much further when we took over the project in 2020. We went through, this is the weighted criteria or the criteria that we reviewed, the different types of intersection improvements that we could. Some of the ideas that we wanted to make sure that we were concerned with was newer drivers, just a wider shoulder and allowing bypass traffic increases the chance of accidents, increases the risk of pedestrian conflicts and strikes. So those were some of the things that we want to make sure that we're aware of when we're making these decisions is just widening the roadway isn't necessarily going to solve any issues. It's certainly going to potentially increase speed through there, and why we think the preferred alternative has merits based on when we focus on access, speed, and pedestrian crossings in that area.
I, one quick one. I've seen on two of the slides maintained village feel, and both times, the roundabouts were green, and maintaining our village feel is neutral. So how does a roundabout give you a more of a village feel?
I think there's additional landscaping on the outside of a compact roundabout. There's some architectural treatments. I would refer to Manchester Center as a design that Stantec did of a compact roundabout. It's right at the edge of their commercial street. It's very attractive. So I think that there are, it's more of a holistic look at how you would treat the sidewalks, the crossings, some of the texture elements as part of maintaining. If it's just the existing, it probably, that's where we're ranking it slightly higher than an existing no build because there's none of that in the existing condition. And again, this is a collaborative effort. This is not the DOT telling you what to do, right? This is your project. I'm going to iterate that many times throughout the course of our informational meetings. We would, we want to do a project. This is not the first time the department's been here. We've tried different ways. If it comes down to just dealing with the corridor, we're willing to accept that, but we want to make sure that we have something moving forward. And I know there's a lot of anxiety about the project. Certainly, I probably would like to have done the outreach with Wolfboro Electric a little bit differently than the last couple of months so that we could make sure that we didn't have some of these challenges. But I think it's important that, you know, all of this is building. It was going to come out one way or another. There was going to be some challenges associated with these changes, and it worked out the way it did, and I'm glad we've had the opportunity to kind of speak to it and work through it. I'm going to sort of skip ahead. We did do the public input survey. It's about 50/50 split on the two for the input that we received. You know, from an engineering perspective, doing something is better than nothing, and that's where, why we would love to choose the preferred alternative to move forward. You know, from an operations, access, safety, it's much better from an engineering standpoint. If it's not something the community is willing to support, I am, as the project manager, I'm willing to go back to a sort of a no-build approach so that we can build a project.
So in other words, we can say, okay, go ahead, design the two roundabouts, but come to the final decision, we can say, no, forget about McManus Road or do such and such. We make that decision so we're not committed to it at this point.
I'm going to say yes, because I have plenty of opportunities for public comment.
Sold.
Have a public hearing.
Sold.
Yeah, I know.
I have one, though. When the McManus roundabout conversation was teed up, there was a, and I think Roger inferred this, there were people saying, I'm coming out of Pleasant Valley Road and then wham-o, I'm hitting a roundabout. Did that get into the engineering rubric? Because I think there was a concern that traffic coming out of Pleasant Valley, going into Pleasant Valley Road was going to just slam into this roundabout and then have to flummox its way around.
I think, I think that's why they teed it, and when they teed it, they brought it down further.
That's correct.
Or was that why you did cross-road? Wasn't there a conversation?
No, it just brings, instead of Pleasant Valley going out this way, you have to come to a stop, and it's down.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get the dust out of my head.
I think it's the change in how Pleasant Valley comes out.
Yeah, I think one of the challenges today is the close proximity of the two intersections. And you can see in this graphic, you know, by realigning Pleasant Valley, we can eliminate some of that separate, or we can create more separation between McManus.
All right, I got it. Thank you.
And I think that was one of the questions in the PAC. Right? All right, so we did the same thing for McManus, just so everybody could kind of see, there is a large amount of pavement area today, and with the compact, there would be, there would be more, and there are some impacts. So again, thinking about worst-case scenario for us to go through the NEPA process, this would be, this is more of a worst case than that. If there were changes in the future, it would be much more difficult to permit something after the fact. All right. And I've used a lot of your time. I appreciate all the time you've given me. On the preferred, I don't believe that there's anybody that has a problem with the corridor. This was something that was vetted very, very well through the steering committee. We really haven't changed a whole lot. The most important feature, I think that we can add in this project is the five-foot shoulders. You know, that provides the bicycle accommodations that the community is looking for, want to maintain the sidewalk. It will reduce the buffer space between, definitely between, or at least along the segment of Brewster, but I think that gives the community something that they were looking for. All right, I did go through this. I think this is probably more, one of Curtis, our design team lead, said this as well. I think this is great for the website. It kind of walks through a lot of the different time durations that we need just to get through the NEPA process, and so I do expect that to take most of 2025, to be able to have the meetings with, I'm going to say ship bow, state historic preservation officer, make sure that we identify what the impacts. I just approved 20 individual inventory forms, which are going to look at the significance, the historic significance of each of the structures. And that's probably going to take us six months to be able to just get the information back from our historians. And then we'll have to document it, we'll have to evaluate those impacts. Those impacts include not only the physical construction or the permanent impacts, but also the visual impacts that we need to consider, which is one of the reasons why, you know, we think signals would be really difficult to approve through the Section 4F process. We talked about right-of-way, final acquisitions, and I think this is the biggest thing that we all need to talk about. So construction, there's a lot of misconceptions about what we are going to pay for regarding the drainage. If we are building it for the roadway, the department is paying for drainage. We are also paying for the best management practices. If we need two, if we need three, if we only need one, we're going to construct it. If we're using federal dollars, we will have an easement on it, and we will maintain that.
Trees. What about trees?
Trees, great question. So if I have impacts to trees that are outside of the right-of-way, I'm going to, we handle that through our right-of-way process, and if it's a landscaped impact, it's a tree on a private parcel, then we would replace that tree. If it's within the right-of-way, as you can see, I don't have enough money for all of these improvements, and that would be the first thing. That's not our typical thing to do within the right-of-way to pay for it. We're probably within the right-of-way to pay for it. We're probably going to lose trees because of the utility relocations and the, and the temporary construction needed to, to build the roadway. And, and so that's, that's kind of the line that I would like to draw for, for the project. But again, if we are impacting landscaping for a private property, we would be taking care of that through the right-of-way process. If it was an impact associated with a historic property and there was a visual, then we'd have a commitment to replace that tree as well.
Park museum.
But we are going to be responsible. You're going to take care of the bike lane. You're going to take care of the drainage. We would be responsible for the sidewalks?
No.
You're going to take, you're going to...
The sidewalks are part of the project because again, we, we put that into the purpose of need so that we would rebuild the sidewalks. And I'm probably the, this plan, it's a poor plan for that. But the sidewalks are on both sides, essentially from Pickering Corner, south to Old Mill. We have sidewalks on both sides. Those would be constructed by the project and paid for by the project. We have one sidewalk on the, on the east side, I'll call it, or the north side. It's on the bottom of the page between Old Mill and Kingswood. And then we'd have some treatments around Pleasant Valley so that we could terminate it safely. The project is paying for the sidewalks. We are also paying for, if we have to get our drainage from South Main Street to the BMP that we've talked to Huggins Hospital about, we will pay for that drainage. If we have to restore Crescent Valley because, Crescent Lake, sorry, not Crescent Valley, Crescent Lake, we have to restore, we wouldn't be widening. There's no widening. There's no sidewalks on that. That would be something that if the town wanted to do above and beyond what's out there today. But if we impacted the sidewalk, then we repair. So I'm going to call all of Crescent Lake Ave, all of that is, is restoration work. We would be bringing it down to the BMP. The BMP is needed to meet our water quality requirements with DES. The, the project pays for the BMP.
This is all new information for us.
Yes, it's not what we, so the shortage of $3.4 million, you'll just have to cut the project. You're not going to be looking for the town of Wolfboro to come up with the $3.4 million.
I have no agreement with the town of Wolfboro at this moment to pay for additional costs beyond that. The, the project is funded through the 10-year plan. It's 80% federal dollars. We've got a 20% Turnpike Total Credit match. That's where the funding is coming unless something changes. Now, there could be non-participating funds if you wanted to do something above and beyond. And those things could be amenities and benches. I didn't cover lighting. Lighting, we would, we will pay for as part of the project, anything that is required as part of the, the regulations or the design requirements. So if there's intersection lighting today and we have to replace it, then we, we would support that. If you're looking for an upgrade to architectural lighting or different types of lamp features and fixtures, that would be a non-participating cost.
Okay. So then this $2 million to $3 million that we've been carrying in our CIP, we aren't going to need for this project.
I'm sorry to knew that, Linda.
We have carried in the CIP for a number of years, $2 to $3 million because we were under the understanding that we were a white line to white line community. Outside that white line was us, which meant sidewalks, curving, drainage. And we carried a, a number in our CIP. And what I'm hearing you say tonight, which really makes me happy, is we don't need to carry that because we're not responsible. You're going to take care of it in your project.
I think at the time when we met with Mr. Ford early on, there were other improvements beyond South Main Street that the town had envisioned because of a lot of the water quality studies that have been conducted. There was some different thoughts about BMPs, drainage to connect flow, fix some issues. There was some other thoughts in there from a public work standpoint that, that might have been carried.
Library.
I think also the white line community, which is something that there is support of the department to sort of take care of because right now it's a white line community where historically there's no parking for that section of roadway on South Main Street. So what we have, I guess what we would propose is to articulate a, a main easement that covers these type of things. Obviously, if, if you have a policy for sidewalks and maintaining them, then we can build the sidewalks in, in the project because you would be maintaining the sidewalks out there. Same thing with the pedestrian crossings or any other additional features. If there are some different pavement markings that the town would like to keep, there was a project recently we did in, in the Seacoast. They wanted bicycle pavement markings. That's not something that we have resources to be able to maintain. That was an, an agreement with the community to continue to maintain them. If you have architectural enhanced lighting, we'd have an agreement in place for that. And then drainage within the white line, because we want to make sure that we can maintain, if we're going to build a BMP and we're going to have an easement that we purchased with federal dollars, we want to make sure that we come up with an agreement there. So again, we've, we've done, or we're in the process with another project to kind of do something very similar with some projects that span white line communities or white line districts. And we're establishing with that specific district, a maintenance agreement with the community to be able to maintain that.
Can you send us any kind of example?
I don't have the example yet because they're drafting it.
Oh, because they're still...
As through the process, we would, you know, especially after the hearing, I, I would want to basically establish what that agreement would be. And that way we could sign it early on in the process where everybody's on the same page. It establishes responsibilities and cost.
I think that would be very helpful for us.
If, if we were to build the road as is, you were just to redo the road as is, leave the sidewalks where they were, no expansion for width or anything, would you be giving us new sidewalks?
No, because there would be no need to reconstruct the sidewalks.
Correct.
But the...
Is it drainage and sidewalks?
One, I want to, I take, part of the purpose and need statement that we established with the project advisory committee was we had drainage issues specifically between Huggins and Pickering Corner because it's lower than the roadway that needed to be addressed. So we put that in a purpose and need so we could take care of it.
Yep. Good. Perfect. I like it.
Yep. News to me.
So hopefully tonight, we've, we've cleared up some of the misconceptions as far as what we're paying for, what we would be maintaining. I think that's probably the most important thing that created a little anxiety from the department's standpoint. You know, certainly, you know, this is an ongoing effort. We would like to be able to permit this and get approval to move into the final design and right-of-way stages. By doing that, I am looking for a letter of support to move this, this forward if, if the community doesn't want roundabouts. And you want to write that in, then write that into your letter of support and we can, we can remove it. I think, again, the department wants to build something. This has been a, this is a problem for District 3 as well. And we have the money that the community had advocated for, for the 10-year plan. And, and we certainly want to do something. So I think if I'm not making myself clear on any particular issue, I would like to address that question. If there's any specific questions that we need technically, it's getting pretty late, but Dave is here also to, to help us out with that.
Thanks for what you did.
Does anybody have any technical on our board? Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
We, you want a letter for us? I think we'll take a little time to put that together. Any board members, any others? So we move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead Suzanne. Go ahead Suzanne.
Okay. Since it's after nine, let's see if we can get going here. Next item on our agenda is the recommended CIP guidelines memorandum.
They filing out. Board evaluation. Very nice. So in front of you tonight, you have your annual memo regarding the guidelines for the CIP process for the upcoming year. Pretty boilerplate document, similar to those of past years. So here it is for your review and to be able to take your input.
You have anything? I have a few.
I, I have some, but I'll let you guys do it. I'll start with you and Brian, and we'll come down this way and see how many of us agree.
Okay. So I'll go quick. It says, to continue to use capital reserve accounts as a method to spread our costs. Let's make sure that we really do that. That we, we don't call it a capital reserve fund and then deplete it to almost zero and then re-add numbers to it. Second one would be no more than one bonded general fund project per year. What if we have an emergency situation?
These are just guidelines. We try to, you know, instead of having three or four of them.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
And the last one I want to say is, it's great that I now see that we're putting a double focus on ADA compliance.
Paul, do you have anything?
I'm going to pick up on Jim's words. It, it does feel like boilerplate. It feels like the boilerplate that I read nine years ago. And I'm not, I'm not saying that to be criticized. I'm saying that to suggest that, and I know there's a short fuse on getting this done. I, I like the, for capital improvement, I, I like the idea that says numbers matter. We should have financial hurdles for everything we want to do on the capital side. We should have integration with our master plan. We should have a direct line back to what we spent all that time saying we should do. My personal preferences is, and I agree with, I agree with the comment of ADA and compliance. It's very important. My personal preferences are, we got to get about the things that have been costing us a lot of money and will cost us a ton in the future, which is drainage, water, sewer, and roads. And, and I know that's going to hurt some other people who say, well, what about, you know, what about me? But I'd like to move away from the boilerplate and move into a more structured competition for capital, alignment to the master plan, make sure that we deal with water quality, ADA compliance. Those are like table stakes to me. But then say, you know, this idea of, you know, no more than one general fund project a year, I, I kind of rally to Brian's point. That to me doesn't make a whole bunch of sense. We should just say best project wins as long as it complies with things that we believe are important. Could be master plan stuff, could be water drainage, sewer and all that stuff. So I, I'd be willing to help, you know, sit down and thrash with, with anybody on this one rather than just kind of throw it. But that's kind of where I am. Thanks.
Brad?
Yeah, kind of looking at number two and number six, kind of working together for me here. To have all the department heads spread their projects over 10 years and where asset management plans are available to base their requests on them. And then, you know, looking at number six also, which is, as Brian pointed out, to propose no more than one bonded general fund project per year. I think that's kind of, you know, they kind of go together. And I think it really gets departments and you need to have departments work with each other too to, you know, along with CIP committee to, you know, place them in the order that they need to be in so that we try and fulfill the guideline for number six the best that we can so that we don't end up a whole lot of them bunched up at, at one time or come together, you know, three or four years down the road and all of a sudden say, you know, geez, we don't, we really need to address all these now. And then we, you know, go back to the voters and say, you know, we got these major projects and we're going to, you know, it's going to be a big tax impact. So I think the, the planning tool and having these in here is good. And I, you know, hopefully we really just follow through on these. So that's it.
I think one of the, I think one of the issues that Paul's having, I think all that information is on the submittal form. And without the submittal form here, they're supposed to be related to the master plan. There's the operation and costs. So maybe we should, you should get to see that and we should have that part of this. I'm not quite sure what is recall CIP projects are at least $100,000 in cost. Are we talking about old projects that didn't go through? What is a recall CIP project? I'm not quite sure what that is. Does anybody?
I think it's simply a grammatical misprint, if you want. This is the way the town has worded it for a long time. The idea is just to say, department heads, remember or recall CIP projects are all projects over $100,000. Not recalling projects. Just keep in mind that all projects over $100,000 need to be in CIP.
So it should say all projects must be $100,000 or more.
So you could just eliminate the word recall.
Yep.
Madam Chairman, you kindly, you kindly reminded us that the, you know, the impact, you know, is it aligned to the master plan? Is it all, you know, all that? Well, if you read item number 12, it kind of, it kind of comes across as a little soft. Department heads will in a timely manner complete the forms and supporting documentation. And this is just me. I mean, you either have this stuff filled out, you either have your capital aggression identified, you either have your plan, or you don't. And, and if you don't get it done, you don't, you don't get up to bat. So I'm, I'm kind of more in a, I hate to be this, more in a didactic, you know, just, just...
I, I think...
You're competing for capital. And, and, and just the test, if I look back, and I'll park it right here, Linda. The test is if we say, hey, no more than one general fund project should show up. Well, let's just look back to the past 18 months. How many did we put on where general fund projects? Okay, big ones. So, so do what you think is right. I think, I, I want this to be a useful document, a utility for the town. It doesn't feel to me, I've been away, but it doesn't feel to me like it, it serves that purpose. That's all. Not being, not criticizing, just giving a critical comment.
I'm not taking it, anything as criticism. I didn't write it. So just keep in mind the CIP is a function and an extension arm of the master plan process, which is borne through the planning board. So the planning board works with the master plan, gets, it works with the public, creates a master plan. The CIP, there have been a number of discussions about this, particularly in the past couple of years. Should all projects over $100,000 be in the CIP or only actual capital projects? CIP committee members have previously said, well, the, the annual road renovation replacement really isn't a CIP thing. That's an operating budget thing. But the information that came back from the selectmen side was we, we liked this, the CIP numbers early so that early on we have more of a budgetary picture of what the budget is going to be shaping up to be. So that when we actually have a budget in front of us, we're not surprised by larger projects.
I, I thought the CIP and why we put those projects in was to try to get them so they're spread over the 10 years. So one year won't have a spike. And if we're putting $800,000 or to a million into roads, that is a large project. And that's why we had those in the CIP. So you could kind of see how over time, so you might have, you know, you're doing something here on the, on the roads and you may be doing another project. Well, then maybe you will do something else. So you get to see the projects that are coming up and have a look at them in the years and that the CIP at times could move them over a year or two.
So and to Paul's comment about the short fuse, if you will, on this, you guys can make any recommendations you want. You can come up with any guidelines that you want to be shared with the CIP committee. The fuse that's in play right now, the schedule that's lined out to keep everything timed out with budget committee and everything else that occurs between now and next March, has department heads submitting completed project request forms with a, what town manager and I are calling a drop dead date of July 26. So the only thing that happens with these guidelines between now and that submission period is going to the planning board, to your planning board here, the, the guidelines suggested by the board of selectmen. So that could happen at the beginning of July, but then that's when the fuse really starts to burn. So in a perfect world, and I'm happy to work with subset or special, I hate saying it 9:20 at night, but a special meeting to come up with guidelines. But if that could be done a next week or two, that would be helpful for the process.
What would the board like to do? Shall we move them on? Or do we want to try to redo them as Paul suggested?
We could submit our suggestions to Paul. Paul could create a draft for us that we could look at, at our next meeting.
I'd recommend you submit them to Travis.
My feeling was let's go forward with what we have here this year and that this, put this on one of the things that we should work on early in the following year to get it in a different format.
Let's see how it works. Sure.
If, if, anybody have an issue with that?
I'm good with that.
Does somebody want to make a motion? Does somebody want to make a motion to pass these over to the planning board? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Does that include removing the word recall from number one?
I think you would do that just because you wouldn't want it to go that way. Okay?
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah, no, I think you can take care of that without us mandating it. Any further discussion?
Could we underline ADA compliance?
Yes, we can make that bold. Would that be all right?
Perfect.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, got through that one. Ad hoc sidewalk committee recommendations. Oh, long wait for this one.
Oh, my goodness.
I want to thank you for your patience.
They should save the best for last, right? All right, well, good evening. My name is Michael Billetto. Most of you know me. About six months ago, I was selected as the Chair of the ad hoc sidewalk committee. And we spent the past six months working and doing some review, and we're about to report. So the select board, realizing that there was a need to review the whole downtown sidewalk usage by both the businesses and the patrons, you, the board, requested an ad hoc subcommittee be established to review and make recommendations that would best serve the businesses, patrons, and the town. It was clear that there were many issues surrounding the downtown's usage of these sidewalks, and more current utilization was needed to hopefully bring uniformity to all. As a result, this committee was formed. The committee, once sworn in, immediately created a mission statement that stated, in short, "The commission of the committee is to evaluate the usage of downtown sidewalks, review existing use, and make recommendations for any ordinances or updates that may be needed." But before we go too far, this committee dedicated many hours to this cause, and I would like to publicly recognize each of the members right now. Brenda Juret, Bobby Bodman, Mary DeVries, Shirley Furlong, which was our secretary, and the two select board members, Linda and Brian. We want to thank each of you for all your efforts, your time, dedication to helping Wolfboro become a better tomorrow than it is today. It was a joy to work alongside each of you. Together, I believe we have made some solid recommendations that will move the downtown forward. The subcommittee over the past six months worked diligently to accomplish the stated mission by reviewing like-kind policies and ordinances from other New Hampshire jurisdictions, discussing with those jurisdictions the benefits and shortfalls of those particular ordinances. We conducted a town survey for feedback from businesses and residents. This survey was distributed online digitally through the cooperation of the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce website, and a printed version through the town website that was completed manually and returned to the town offices for our review. All total, the surveys completed, both online and handwritten, totaled 36. Now, prior to tonight, I was disappointed that there were only 36 responses. But after hearing the initial surveys that were done for the street renewal, only 35 came in, I said, oh, we didn't do that bad. But obviously nowhere near the qualifiable sample. But nonetheless, it was valuable input and feedback that was received that helped us to get where we are with these recommendations. We reviewed in depth the federally mandated ADA guidelines. We reviewed sidewalk measurements throughout the town area. We discussed enforcement, and all of that with a lot of additional deliberation and discussions over the past six months. Key pieces of the committee's work was presented to you last week for review in preparation for tonight's meeting, and I hope that each and every one of you have had a chance to review that. Now, with the specific work, as we discussed here with the monthly meetings, the research, surveys, and discussions, the ad hoc sidewalk subcommittee for the Wolfboro Select Board recommends the following changes to the town ordinances as it relates to downtown sidewalks and business and the businesses' use thereof, ultimately leading to bringing uniformity to the downtown area. In particular, but not limited to these suggested changes, references ordinances 140-13, 140-13S, which is controlled by the select board, and Section 175, 44G, Paragraph D, Part Subparagraph 4, which is controlled by the planning board. In addition to this presentation tonight, these recommendations will also be presented to the Wolfboro Planning Board in the weeks to come, as they can discuss and act on the items under their jurisdiction. So now the recommendations are that we add and modify town ADA compliance verbiage that would require a minimum of 50 inches from street edge to the placement of any tables, chairs, benches, signs, sandwich boards, flags, or other fixtures. We would add or modify the hanging flags to state, "All hanging flags shall be no lower than 6.5 vertical feet from the sidewalk at its lowest point." We would recommend the adoption of a seasonal downtown sidewalk use permit application with a fee for businesses to utilize town property directly in front of their business during periods consistent with ordinances and snow removal policies. With the exception of holiday decorations, we recommend that no fixtures of any kind may be present on sidewalks from December 16 through March 31, due to the weather and the town's responsibility to clear the snow from the sidewalks. And I believe that's already existing in the plan. This permit would require all businesses to apply for such a permit when it requires the use of town-owned sidewalks or the desire to place anything on the sidewalks, whether the property is owned or not owned. This permit shall be an application-based and include diagrams, pictures, ADA compliance acceptance, certificates of insurance, and enforceable clause acknowledgement. With this permit, it should allow tables, chairs, signs, sandwich boards, clothing racks, and other fixtures outside and directly in front of the place of business, as long as the occupied space does not at any time infringe on the ADA minimum standards agreed upon by the board, and the business agrees to monitor these sidewalks for cleanliness, for trash, dirty dishes, et cetera, and ultimately be held responsible for the cleanliness of the business frontage. In addition, we will limit, we suggest that we limit all businesses to one table, no greater than 24 by 30, which is a cafe-sized table, and two chairs per eight feet of business frontage, and/or one bench or other fixture of any length per eight foot of frontage. This policy would be enforceable whether or not the property is owned by the business or the town. Next, we would require all businesses to comply with the stated ordinances and that strict adherence to the permit terms within the policy, with fines levied for noncompliance. And then strict compliance for new and existing ordinances with a three-strikes-you're-out model, and further recommend that the select board consider monetary fines. In your literature, you'll notice that we had some examples. First offense, a warning, a written warning with 48 hours to comply. Second offense would be a $50 fine. The third offense would be a $100 fine and removal of the fixtures for the remainder of the season. After that point, if you get to three strikes and you're out, the businesses could reapply for a new permit the following year, with the understanding that the willful failure to follow the policy would automatically result in a one-year ban from utilization of that space. So understand that these recommendations made by this committee and the board has had a week, or you guys have had some time to review it. Those are basically what we have come up with over the last six months, and we're open for, or I'm open, I guess, for discussion. We had all board members here at one time, but I think there's only one left because everybody kind of departed. But it was a joy to work, and I think the town desperately needs uniformity downtown. And by bringing uniformity and bringing change, it's going to create havoc for some people. And that's just a part of, that's just the course that we have to follow when we have to make change anywhere for anything. So any questions or comments or discussions that we'd like to have?
Any questions, comments? Okay, Brian?
So the only one I have, and it was brought up by one of our members, Bobby Bodman, and what happens, especially on railroad Ave, because there's angled parking, the front of cars goes over the sidewalk. If there is a table and chairs, and we save the 50 inches, and then a car goes over, and I've measured them with tape measure, just to see what it is, and the biggest I've seen is about 16 to 18 inches that they can encroach over the sidewalk. So now our 50 inches shrinks down to potentially 32 inches, which doesn't even make the regular federal and state ADA compliance. So funny thing is that if you add four inches to it, that 50 inches that we kind of talked about as a group, it turns into 54 inches, which, let's go back to my silly time, when I measured Brad and Linda, they were 54 inches side by side, and that was a number that I actually pulled out and said, hmm, this would be a good width. It was just on a whim. But if you do, if we do up it to the 54 inches, take away the 18, we're still at 36. So it's just something to consider. I haven't seen a car go more than 18 inches over the sidewalk, and it only happens on Central Ave and Railroad Ave, where they parked angled in the corner of a bumper, goes over the sidewalk.
And I did the same. I did a bunch of measurements over the last month, and I was, it was 12 to 13 inches on average.
Most of them, yeah. I hit a couple, I hit a Toyota, believe it or not, a Toyota pickup truck, Tundra, was almost 18. And then someone came in with a small car and drove it right up over the sidewalk. A piece of plastic was broken off underneath, and they were 18 inches over the sidewalk with their car. So if we're going to have the tables in there, and we're going to allow them, and we're going to license them, and we're going to collect money for them, we have to make sure that we at least meet the federal requirement for 36 inches. And we are shooting for most of our sidewalks to be 50 inches wide, because that's walkable with larger wheelchairs, larger strollers, and people that need support with walkers, canes, and other things.
I did measure, just one more note of interest. I did note, in front of our place, which is one of the vehicles that I measured at the 13 inches, we still had 49 inches available, which is fairly close to what our compliance would be if we modified those. So I think there's still enough room based on that whole area. It's just a matter of, you know, defining how we want to do it and making sure we all live up to it.
I mean, I wish there was a way that we could have the cars parked so that they don't encroach on the sidewalk, but that's...
The only way that's going to happen is putting a barrier down the edge, and that's not going to, that's not cost-effective.
One of the things that I noticed from reading all the surveys, and I think it was everybody wanted to be able to move freely on the sidewalk and people have passage. And that's what we're trying to do here. And I found that consistent in every one of the surveys. So, and I think the reason you went to 50 inches, that that allowed for that to happen.
Yeah.
So I don't know how the board wants to handle this. We have recommendations. The recommendations would have to then be put into wording of an ordinance.
Correct.
And whether the board wants to go through here, or has any issue with any of it, or whether you would like the staff to take this and put them in wording in some ordinances, and then take a look at the ordinances. I don't know how the rest of you would like to handle it.
Looking at it, I don't see anything that I think has a legality problem. I don't know if we need town council to look at it. I think that we're okay with that.
I think we do have some problems, one of which is our agreement, which I think was emailed out to you. We have an agreement with 15 Railroad Avenue. And they are required to keep, I think it's 48 inches, and they're allowed specific tables per easement. And I think this could conflict, and I think we would want clarification on this.
Yeah, the only other one would be to see with council if, depending whether someone owns the sidewalk or doesn't own the sidewalk, can we still charge them a fee, based on the history that we have always been, the town has always been the one that maintained, shoveled, you know, repaired sidewalks. Then we found this out, or we have this that came to us today, that shows that Bradley's Hardware Sidewalk is half-owned by the town and half-owned by Bradley's.
I got this and had it sent out. This is the survey we did, one we redid Railroad Avenue down by the turnaround by the railroad station and depot. When I looked at it, is also, there's part of it where there is no sidewalk, it's ours. I think that may be where their door is.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's hard to tell. There are some areas where they have it, and some of it's ours. You're right. I just thought those were ones we had talked about, and wanted to make sure people had it. So again, do we want to take, are there any other recommendations? Were concerned about private and publicly owned, whether we can put the fee, that we want to send that out to council? How does the other people feel? Brian and I have listened to this for a long time.
If I could comment, before we go a little bit further on this, is that there are a few jurisdictions that are faced with the same obstacles that we are, where it's both owned by themselves and the town in front of their property, and they still charge a fee for the permit. They just feel like, it's the town, we have to have uniformity. We cover the snow removal, we cover the maintenance of the front of that, whether you own it or not. It's just the price you pay to be in a downtown area where it's covered by two zones, quite honestly. So I don't see, now, I wasn't able to find any RSA that violated that, because I did research it, but I probably could have spent a little bit more time if I had it.
I think it made sense for us to send it out to town council. We have that, and then we have this easement, and we can just take care of it, and then we don't.
And I agree with you, that I think it should be uniform across the board, but we want to make sure that we, that people understand that we've taken this into consideration, that we understand that you may own half of your sidewalk and not, and your neighbor may own all of their sidewalk, and the next neighbor may own none of their sidewalk. And we have to kind of make it fair and equitable for all.
Absolutely.
And supply a service to the people that visit and to the people who live in town to be able to walk the sidewalks safely. I've seen it in the summer. If you walk off the sidewalk onto 28, onto 28 or 109, and you walk onto the roadway, that's actually breaking a state RSA.
Correct.
So we don't want to force citizens into doing something illegal because our sidewalks are cluttered.
Correct.
Any other board members? I mean, Brad?
Yeah, I'll just state that I agree. I think it does need to be reviewed by council, obviously. And at some point, wouldn't, would we want to be bringing this to, you know, a public hearing for input from?
Absolutely.
I know the committee's had public hearings with businesses and stuff, I know they did surveys and stuff, but should we have a...
We have to, if we're going to change the ordinance. I was just trying to get it into ordinance wording before we even got down there.
Cut that far.
I don't think we could have a public hearing on the way this, but I agree with you, Brad, that we do.
Needs to get there, and also the planning board will probably have to do the same thing, I would assume, because it's going to be, both boards will be implementing this together, so.
I didn't know whether the planning board, because if it's in the zoning ordinance, would it have to go up for vote at town meeting?
Probably.
And that's the sign part of it. So I'm not, yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
I see what the outside use of the business.
There's a friend.
That's bad.
Here it is.
That's a big one.
It's the Macbeth.
And I want to, I want to give it right back and say, Mr. Billetto, thank you very much for chairing this committee. Thank you. It was very, very thoughtful information. This is a great piece of document that we are going to be able to use and create something that is going to solve the problem. A year and a half ago, we were saying, we'll just take this and we'll take, look at each one ad hoc, one at a time, and we'll decide what to do. And that wouldn't have been the correct thing to do, to treat different businesses in different situations. So I'm pleased with this.
And also, I want to thank you. I did my email thank you. It took a lot of work, and it has helped us move forward. And we can solve problems, can't we?
Yes, we can. Do we have... All right. Yeah, I don't know. Is it okay if I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. So...
They have echo location. We got to get them outside, though.
Hey, Brian, let, Paul, we're late. Paul, you want to go on?
Yeah. So what is the, what are the boundaries of this? It says all downtown. So what is all downtown? I guess we terminated, we decided that the downtowns, all the downtown sidewalk area from basically... all the downtown sidewalk area from basically, probably, I don't remember this, I don't, I don't know all the streets. I can't remember all of them. But from the post office down to Bay Street and then all of Central and Railroad, basically the main corridor that's.
My advice would be to have that clearly specified because there may be some interested parties who would want to come to a public hearing and talk about, you know, their interest in that area. The, the, I just, and why do we, have we conducted a, that, that I don't think is a survey. If somebody says it is, then I just need to see a survey or stamp. Have we surveyed the properties in the area that you have defined as eligible for this form of regulation? So do we know where people's boundaries are?
We do have a GIS site map.
We have a survey.
A town survey map that was provided to us by Brian during our negotiations, negotiations and discussions over the few, a few meetings that we have.
Not a tax mark, but a survey.
It is, I believe it is a GIS survey.
Yeah, so Sandtech, when they did all the work for the rebuild of our downtown North Main Street.
And Railroad Avenue.
And Railroad Ave, no, South Main Street and Railroad Ave. They did a very, very detailed survey and they show exactly where the property lines are with regards to the roadways and the sidewalks.
It would be important to, and maybe I just couldn't find it in here. It'd be important to have that so that people know what their boundaries are.
Email that I distributed to Amy. It should have been a copy of that GIS map that I.
I mean, I have this, but I don't, again, I don't see a surveyor's stamp.
Paul, we can have, we have big, huge rolls of it and you can look at it.
Just want to see a survey or stamp. That's good. Now, the, the 50 inches, are you suggesting, because I think you are, that if somebody owns property, that, that 50 inches goes up to, it could encroach on their owned property?
Those are, yeah, absolutely. The, the federal guidelines stipulate you have to make, you have to have 36 inches.
Correct.
From the, from the door.
Correct.
To the road. All we're saying is adding 14 more inches to make it more compatible for wheelchair access and multiple people walking.
And in the town of Wolfboro, are there, are there current, what would we call them, complaints, filings, pieces of paper that have been sent in that said, we are not ADA compliant in certain areas? Do we, do we have that?
Good question. I don't have that answer.
I'm not, this wasn't meant to be a trick question.
No, I don't know, I don't know that answer.
I checked today, just for the hell of it, I checked. And the answer to that is zero. But there haven't been any, haven't been any documents. So we, we don't want to get accused. My advice to you is we do not want to get accused of managing by hearsay. We either manage by a fact or we don't. And expanding it from 36 to 50 is gonna, is gonna draw fire from people that say, well, there's no complaints. So we just parked that one with you. And by the way, we're obligated by the federals to send them a, an annual report of how many complaints we've had. We haven't filed a report that says we have any. So if the objective is to deal with clear walking of the walkway and we want to expand ADA access, someone's going to push back and say, but we don't have a documented complaint. Just, I'm just leaving that with you, okay?
Whether we have a documented complaint or not, I don't know if it's that relevant.
But that's gonna be up to people to say it's a good idea or not, right?
But the town has the right to, as long as they stipulate 36 inches minimum, to formulate any width that they want, as long as the town approves it and makes it a part of the ordinance.
No, I agree.
They are absolutely.
We, we have lots of rights. And, and, and we also have a town. And this, and I'm not being disrespectful. I'm just giving you a critique. This doesn't feel like Wolfboro to me. It feels a little regressive. You know, absolutely, you must, you will. And what's the 50 bucks gonna get used for?
It's whatever the town wants to use for. Trash bin, extra trash cans, extra work downtown.
The money from, from that could go into our.
General fund.
Could we put it in our capital, our sidewalk improvement fund?
And then, and then the next question I just have is.
Just a general fund.
Is, it strikes me, and I've seen a, an image that was sent in by Bobby a few minutes ago of a truck, you know, with the nose of the truck over the. It strikes me that we're back to the old saw. We have enforcement challenges. And it's not clear to me that by adding more structure, more you musts is going to increase our ability to enforce. We're not doing it now. Let's start now, would be my advice. So I'm just, I'm just telling you how I react to this. It just feels aggressive.
How does the car parked cause a, an enforcement issue?
Write them a ticket.
Let me, let me just.
He's not doing, the person's not doing anything illegal parking their car.
Put a concrete barrier up there so the wheels don't.
Wait, no, stop. No, we got to get this under control. All right, the back and forth, we're now almost 10 o'clock and we've got a lot left to do. This is just a draft.
Thank you.
The reason this came forward was because we had people coming and asking us to put tables on the sidewalk. And it was our attempt to try to put some structure on why we would give a permit and let somebody do it or not. And so that's what this is. Let's, let's see it, check it out with town council on whether we can, which is part, what you're having is regulate on, on private property. I didn't see this coming as an ADA complaint. I had it, I saw it coming as a way for the town to handle the request of tables on the sidewalk. Is the board comfortable at this late date? I'm sorry, they cut, yeah, we still have a lot to do. Are we comf, are we comfortable taking this, having town council look at it and then get a answer from him and put it on the next agenda? If the board still wants to discuss it? Or do we want to draft, have them, have somebody draft some ordinance language?
Yeah, I think getting town council opinions on some of this and then we would know if we need to work on some of these items in here. So I think that'd be a good, good next step.
So we will have him look at it. We'll bring it back to the next Board of Selectance meeting when we may have a little bit more time. And at that time, you can, or at the end, give us public input and we'll be back dealing with it because we're at. Can you give it to, will you be willing to do it in public input? We are now quarter of 10 and we've got a full agenda still to go. So I will take it from you. All right, come on up and then let's.
As I close, I will say we did not sunset the committee. So if there is extra additional work after your private meetings or meeting with council that we need to get back to the drawing board, we can so do and we're available. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. As a member of the committee, I just felt like it would be nice if a member could speak. One of the things obviously left off of the proposal was the fact that cars do park at an angle over the sidewalk. And I did just take a quick picture. I also measured average cars are 18 inches. However, many of the trucks go up to 28 inches. The chief has stated that that is actually considered parking on the sidewalk. So when you come up with a plan and draft a plan, there are many ideas. We could say that compact, anywhere you give a permit, we have to print compact cars only in the parking spots on the front. Or we can just rope off that section or we can put a pillar. There are many ideas if you're gonna allow for a table and eat up the space of the ADA. But 50 inches minus 18 inches, we're down to 32. We're not even ADA compliant. And I just want to, Linda, I know you were on the board when, when we actually in Wolfboro were, pardon my sunglasses, they're my bifocal. We were hit with the complaint from the United States of America. And the Department of Justice complaint number was 204-47-54. And we still haven't even complied with all of those complaints. So I just think that it is our civic duty and our civil duty to make sure that we are saying ADA compliant. Thank you.
And I will respond to that. We did get that, we did meet all those things and that was dropped. We've completed, we did get that letter. So I just wanted that one piece. Okay.
Thanks, Bobby.
Next item is the payment in lieu of tax agreement. This, I pulled this out of the non-public, I mean, out of the bulk vote. The reason I did that, I also had sent out to you the last five years in the past, what the, the assessed value of the buildings were higher. So when we applied our tax rate, the amount that they would pay in taxes was higher than the $21,000. We gave them anywheres from a three to $5,000 discount. This time it would be less than the $21,000 we've given them in the past. What I didn't know, whether the board want, what figure you would like to use this year. And therefore I asked that it be blank and that we would decide tonight whether we wanted to keep it at the $21,000, which we've done a number of years, whether we wanted to just do the $18,959.38 or whether we wanted to give them a discount on that.
Keep it at the 21 would be my, my thinking.
Paul is saying he'd like to keep the 21. I'd like to at least, I'd like to do the $18,959.38. That's what it would cost on the assessed value if, and you charged the tax rate of $6.02.
I think, Linda, I agree.
I don't know, I think, I leaned at the, kind of leaning at the 21.
No, there's not a, there's not a lot of difference.
Give us a number.
Does somebody want to make a motion? Now let's do it this way. Who's brave enough to make a motion tonight? Oh, come on, men.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we set the pilot payment for tax year 2022 for Hearthstone Homes at $18,959.38.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right.
1,041.
Not at this late hour.
That's all it is.
Okay, next item on the agenda. You guys have waited a nice long time. Is the commercial vessel landing permit for the mailboat.
Hey, you're up.
Hello, I'm Isaac McKenzie with the U.S. Mailboat. So I already talked to Amy and she told me to let you guys know that we will be updating her with the new liability policy with the new boat once it's all cleared. The liability policy we applied with for the permit is still good till the end of June. And that is the one that we had last year with the boats we leased. But we do, are, we are pending a commercial inspection. And I do have right here a survey that we had done on the boat, which both of those should satisfy insurance once we get squared away. So I will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Isaac. Thank you, man.
And then if you guys have any questions.
Yep, just a couple of quick ones.
Yes, absolutely.
Where do you deliver mail to? So everybody knows.
So we deliver, I mean, I guess our areas include Alton. So Rattlesnake Island, I guess, would be included in Alton. Wolfboro Islands, we do Tuftonboro Islands. The furthest we go is Melvin Village. So we have some mainland stops, but those are all grandfathered in.
Okay, and out of your 308 landings a year, it's 154 trips. Do you deliver mail on every trip?
Yes, so this year we're actually splitting it up into two separate routes. Before we would do about a two and a half hour trip. Now we're doing a 10 a.m. trip and a 1 p.m. trip that are about an hour and a half.
All right, so, so on, on every trip, you do deliver mail, pretty much?
Yes, well, I mean, as it stands, I mean.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we plan to do charters outside of the mail run, but I have never profited on charters outside of the mail run as far as I've been a commercial captain.
Okay. And you're not a non, you're not a nonprofit, are you?
No.
You're a for-profit.
Yes.
And are you now associated or not associated with Dive One of the Saki?
We are. I mean, they sell tickets for us. Tom's still a business partner. We just don't lease a boat from him anymore.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a contract with the post office to deliver that mail?
Yes, yeah, so our contract was renewed last year for six, was it last year? Yeah, last year. So we still have five years, five summers left on the contract before another potential renewal.
Perfect.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Dave?
Move to approve. I have one similar to what Paul said. This commercial vessel landing permit is made out to Isaac McKenzie, Wolfboro Charter Services, but the insurance says, Dive One of the Saki Corporation doing business has WCYC, Tom Weigsmith. Those don't match.
Yes, so that was the policy that we had for last year for the mail run. That's good until June 30th. But we no longer lease a boat from Tom. I built my own boat and we just got that marine survey last week. We're still pending a commercial inspection, which are things we need to satisfy the insurance. This is our last chance to get on the docket before June 15th, which is when we start delivering mail.
So you're gonna give us, go ahead, you get it.
So your new insurance binder will be for?
Yes, it will be for the new boat. So before the end of, yes, so hopefully before the 15th, but before the end of the month, we will have an updated policy.
I would, I don't have a problem approving the permit landing subject to the newest insurance to match up with the Wolfboro Charter Services.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you for your time.
Permit. All right. The next item on the agenda is the.
Bond duty.
Proposed ordinance amendment, oh no, it's the bond vote. And you'll be lucky, you guys, I get to read this. It is the permit, it is the bond for the second part of the Public Safety Building. And I have to read this into the record. Resolved that under and pursuant to the Municipal Finance Act, Chapter 33, a NHRSA as amended, New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank Law, Chapter 35-A, NHRSA as amended and other laws in addition thereto. And to vote, and to the votes of the issuer duly adopted on March 14th, 2023, under Article 11 of the warrant for such annual meaning of the issuer, there hereby is authorized the issuance of $6,140,000 bond of the issuer, the bond, which is being issued by the issuer to the finance, finance the structural replacement, expansion and renovation and equipment replacement of the Public Safety Building. The bond shall be dated as of its date of issuance, shall be in such numbers and denominations as the purchaser, purchaser shall request, shall mature in accordance with the schedule set forth in Schedule A to a certain loan agreement therein, after described the loan agreement, shall bear a net interest cost rate as defined in the loan agreement of 4.5%. four and a half percent per annum, or such lesser amount as may be determined by the majority of the board. The bond shall be substantially in the form set forth as Exhibit B to the loan agreement and otherwise shall be issued in such manner and form as the signatories shall approve by their execution thereof. Resolved that the board shall be, the bond should be sold to the bond bank at the par value thereof plus any applicable premiums. Resolved that in order to evidence, that, evidence the sale of the bond, the treasurer of the issuer and the number of the boards are, and the members of the board are authorized and directed to execute a test and deliver in the name and on behalf of the issuer a loan agreement in substantially the form submitted to this meeting, which is hereby approved with such changes therein not inconsistent with this vote and approved by the officers executing the same on behalf of the issuer. The approval of such change by said officers shall be conclusively evidenced by the execution of the loan agreement by such officers. Resolved that all things heretofore done and all actions heretofore taken by the issuer and its officers and agents in its authorization of the project to be financed by the bond are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed. Resolved that the clerk and the signatories of the bond are hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary and convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including delivering the bond against payment therefore. Resolved that the useful life of the project being financed are in excess of 20 years. I further certify that said meeting was open to the public. The, a for said, was voted, for said vote was not taken by secret ballot or in the executive session. That notice of the time and place of said meeting was posted in at least two appropriate public spaces within the territorial limits of the issuer, or published in a newspaper of general circulation in said area at least 24 hours excluding Sundays and legal holidays before said meeting, that no deliberations or action with respect to the vote were taken in executive session, and that the minutes of said meeting have been promptly recorded and have been or will be open to inspection no more than five day, five business days after the meeting, all in accordance with Chapter 91A, N H R S A as amended. I hear, I further certify that the above vote has not been amended or rescinded and remains in full force in effect as of this date. And I think we did it. That's it. Is that all? Do we have to vote on anything, or just read that?
You have to make a motion.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job.
All right. Okay, next one is the proposed ordinance amendment to Chapter 5, alcoholic beverages, 5-1, consumption on town property, violations and penalties permitting of beer wine use on town property. And my understanding is we've held the two required public hearing, and tonight, all we have is a vote. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns by any members?
Nope.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the 5-1 consumption of town, on town property, violations and penalties permitting of beer and wine use on town property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave, seconded by Brian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on, 4th of July, parking ban. This is the, what we do every year, is there shall be no parking along Main Street from Clark Road to the Old Lake, Old Lakeview Terrace on July 4th, 2024, rain date, July 5th, 2024, from 7 a.m. to noon, between the hours of 7 a.m. and noon, for the purpose of the Independence Day Parade. Vehicles will be towed at the owner's expense, and a fine of $50 will be imposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Move to approve. Move to approve a parking ban on July 4th, and close the town hall lot to accessible parking only with a rain date of July 5th.
Second.
Okay, I, um, sure, come on now.
This is my first one doing this, so is it the town that would furnish the signage that we use?
I believe Public Works does.
I think so.
Yeah, and this was a plan that was brought to us by the police department, that they didn't want any parking on the parade route.
Right.
And so.
We need the signage.
Public Works, I think, does.
Public Works.
He was just nodding his head in the back there, so.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Linda, where are the eight, the handicap spots reserved during the parade?
They're, they're up front here, and they'll also have some parking for people who may not be handicapped, but just can't walk all long ways, and sometimes, isn't the trolley drop off here? Kathy, is that?
Right, we, we will be running a trolley shuttle. Both trolleys will run a shuttle beginning, I think it's around 8 o'clock or whatever. I'll look back and see what we did last year. It's when it started to make sense, and we coordinate that with the American Legion, which is doing the parade as well, so that we make the last drop off, and then scoot up and get in line to come down. But one thing I'd love, love to do this year, which we haven't done a good job of last year, is that when we're publicizing the ban, we publicize the shuttle at the same time. So, and I don't know who sends out the communication about the ban in our, in terms of getting that in the paper, or, or who coordinates that? How do we do that? Do you know?
I would, I would get a hold of Amy, wouldn't you? And then Amy would kind of.
And then, yeah, and she as well, so I don't know. We can talk about that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. I know we haven't, and I feel, you know, we've been remiss in not getting that done, and that information out there earlier. There is no charge for the Independence Day shuttle. Well, there's no charge for the shuttle, anyway.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Okay, so I have a motion by Brian, seconded by, I believe, Brad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next one is we, is the 4th of July permission for the Boy Scouts to sell water. We've done this every year, um, to sell Raffa Tickle's t-shirts at its tent. That's for the American Legion. Um, does anybody have any issues? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion, we allow the Boy Scouts to sell water at the 4th of July parade.
Do I have a, okay, I have a motion by Dave, seconded by Brad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is an information piece for the board. It is for the chemical treatment of milfoil in Back Bay, which will happen on June 10th. I think they'll start somewheres around 10 o'clock, and that's for the police department, too, because every once in a while, we get somebody calling up that we're polluting the water. Amy Spagula, who's the head of the milfoil section of D E S, in January, gave us the, that she thought we were going to need to do 33.2 acres for $46,860. She came back, and what you have is a survey. She goes out and surveys the area. She cut it back to 23.5 acres, which cut down the price. Will save around $12,000 to $13,000 by that. So this is just an informational piece for you. Anybody have any questions? All righty.
Thank you.
Jim, July, um, board meeting schedule?
Yeah, so if you look at this proposed meeting schedule for July, we would meet on July 3rd and July 17th. Currently proposing that we shift those meetings around to July 10th and July the 24th, if the board is so inclined.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the North Main Street location for a trolley stop, and the cost of the work is $8,000.
So for a number of years, there's been a request to be able to have a trolley stop on North Main Street at what is known as the former Water Tower site. For a number of years, that has been used as a staging area for USA, who is doing the pole and line replacements along North Main Street. They have completed the work, they are out of that location. Did have the Director of Public Works, in conjunction with the police department, go there to look at the site. The Director of Public Works estimated $8,000 to gravel that area to have parking. I believe it would accommodate up to 32 parking spaces, he had said. There is some line of sight work that needs to be done. Short of that, we're bringing it in front of the board for your consideration, and specific questions could be addressed to the Chief of Police or the Director of Public
Kathy?
Just take a minute, because I think I can maybe resolve, you know, something a little bit here. We talked about this the last couple of years, that, that it is the logical thing to, and as I've been requested by people, well, we'd get on if we could get on a North Main Street. And we did see, last year, when we started using the municipal lot over in Wolfboro Falls, we saw increased use by residents over there, picking up primarily visitors, it seems, up at Kingswood, and more local residents at Wolfboro Falls, and people saying, if we can capture the people coming in the other way, then the free shuttle, the trolley shuttle, will help us in July and August, particularly partnering with the police department, who are enforcing the town ordinance. But that said, this year, we're not going to be doing that, even if the lot is available on North Main Street. Our, our literature was all published, we went to press the end of March, and for two years, we've published something and then changed it. So this year, we're going to stay with the plan for this year. I think it just gets too confusing to people, and one of the things they need and to know if you're going to be offering public, quote, "public transportation," that it has to be consistent. So we're going, where our routes are published, they're in the brochure, which I neglected to bring in tonight, I meant to, but on our map, so that we will be, stay with what we're doing, which is Kingswood to Linda's Flowers to the railroad station. So, so it gives us more time to talk about North Main Street, but I would just, very briefly, because I know where we are tonight, that I would recommend that it not be considered a trolley stop, that you consider making this another municipal parking lot on North Main Street. This would be able to be used for public parking by everyone. It would be able to be used, yes, for shuttle purposes, to alleviate the parking congestion downtown. It could be used for boat trailers. It could be used by tour buses, which are still, we have, we're trying to direct them to Foss Field, but they, I mean, down the Foss parking lot down there, but they need a place to just get out of town while they're waiting. And it could still be used by the Department of Public Works and the municipal electric department, when they need a place to put things for special projects. So it's a, an important piece of property that the town owns now, and it seems to me a clear opportunity that we should make the best of it in terms of using it for all purposes in town, then. And how we would finish it, I think, is, you know, a whole question, and, you know, for Steve to be looking at. It would be nice if it would be like the Glendon Street parking lot, but in fact, it would be nice if the municipal parking lot in Wolfboro Falls looked like the Glendon Street parking lot, and that one is neglected as we have it now. And it seems that putting this in $8,000, considering some of the other projects we have in town, looks pretty good, but not this year. We know we're, we're in a bind this year, and so I think it, it makes sense to maybe look at both of those parking areas being upgraded and put in good shape, so we can publicize them and tell people where they are, and we're not doing a particularly good job of that either, even on our town website. So using these public parking areas, I think, is very important in lots of ways, and to help us with our situation downtown. So I think that's the only thing I had to say, and I think that might help a little bit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So just for clarity, there's no appropriation to spend in $8,000 in this year? So, I don't know what we're approving.
Nothing at this point.
Okay, so this, the notion here that says approval, we're just, this is just an FYI?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This is a 2025 project.
Yeah, well, you know.
I was just reacting to the thing that says approval, that's all. Thank you.
All righty, um, next item is beach pass request from the town of Brookfield. We received a letter from the Selectmen of Brookfield with a pitch to see if we would allow them to have permission to get, I think it is, a few passes this year to see if it worked. I think it's 10 trial passes for the Wolfboro beaches for the town of Brookfield. So I put it on this agenda for us to talk about and see what we wanted to do. And we did, the reason we shut those two parking lots was because that's what the vote of the town was. Voters voted to have those two parking lots closed. Brewster is open. So I, you know, I'm sure if we do this one, Tuftonborough would want it also. I think the issue here is that we, we keep, keeps on coming up, that the, our children in Wolfboro go to school with the kids in Brookfield, and usually play sports with the kids in Tuftonborough. And I think that's the Governor Wentworth Regional School District feeling that we, they go to those beaches to play with some of the friends that they know. Brian?
So the only difference I see is, and I've talked to a couple of the select board members over in Brookfield about this, they don't have any beaches in town. Tuftonborough has beaches, Osiphe has beaches, New Durham has beach, everybody has a beach, they don't have one in Brookfield. That's the only difference that I see. Now, I, excuse my ignorance, I don't buy beach passes. Do our beach passes cost anything? Or are they just free?
No, you can get, they're free, you can either use your dump sticker.
Which we pay $10, $10 apiece for.
Or you can go to Park and Rec and get a pass, and I don't think.
Two passes for no, for no charge?
I believe that.
Free, yeah.
Yep, that's my.
So they are free. Okay. Because my only question that I said I would address with Brookfield would be, if, if our citizens are paying for passes, then Brookfield would have to pay for these passes also. But if our citizens are going to beaches for no charge, I don't have a problem with giving this a one-year trial and, and finding out i- if the extra 10 cars are going to cause, wreak havoc at our, at our two beaches. And again, Tuftonborough has beaches, Osiphe has beaches, you know, this is, this is our little brother community or sister community that doesn't have a beach area for their citizens.
Linda?
Yep.
I got two questions for, on this. First of all, Brookfield now pays, paid in 2022 and 2023, $4,216, two parks in rec to be in the programs. Is that spelled out exactly which programs that entitles them to join or participate in? Or is it just a general, they open up Christine's programs to, to her? Okay.
My understanding is that money makes it so they can pay the, the residential rate, not only for Brookfield, but also for Tuftonborough. It's the same policy. I guess I'm kind of with Brian here. I guess I'm kind of with Brian here. We're talking about 10 trial passes. They don't have a beach, and they are in our carpenter's school, in our school. So to me, I think we could, as a trial, I would kind of support Brian on this. I don't know where other people are.
Madam Chairman?
Yep.
So the voters back in 2020 adopted the beach ordinance that says Brewster is open to the general public, as agreed to in the lease between Brewster and the town. Albee Beach parking access is limited to Wolfborough residents, taxpayers, and guests. Guests include Cotton Valley Trail users, overnight guests, et cetera, et cetera, motel users. And so we gave beach passes to the hotels. Cary Beach parking is limited to Wolfborough residents, taxpayers, and their families and their guests. Guests include overnight guests, hotel, et cetera, et cetera. So that part of the ordinance is pretty, pretty strict, that what the voter said. Now, I would just ask somebody to weigh in on the next one, which is authority. It says the Wolfborough Board of Selectmen may, from time to time, enact such rules and regulations as it deems necessary to affect the provisions of this ordinance. So does that give us the prerogative to do a limited trial? Or are we, not to be disrespectful, or are we kind of saying, well, thank you very much, voter, for, you know, what you, what you wanted, and we've just decided to do something different? I would, I would probably get a piece of advice from somebody who can, who knows how to do this.
Well, I think we probably could do a pilot. And if we did a pilot, we could then put a warrant article next year to allow them use of the beach.
So I just get back to, I'll accede to the wishes of the chairman. I just get back to the no is no thing. And the voter said no, and we're saying, well, maybe. That's all. If we think that's okay to do it, then let's do it.
Dave?
But I think basically, when we close the beaches, we close Albee Beach and Cary Beach to residents and guests only, correct? Brewster Beach was still open to the.
To the public, to everybody, per the lease we had with Brewster.
So we could, in essence, say, okay, you can have 10, we'll do this on 10 permits, but it's only for Brewster Beach.
Well, they can go on Brewster right now.
I don't think you need, yeah, they can go there now.
They can go to Brewster right now, without permits.
Yeah, but I thought you still had to have a beach pass to go to Brewster.
I don't think so. I don't think so.
It's open to the general.
I mean, do I think it's a good idea? Yeah, but I'm just, I'm looking at the ordinance that the voters, you know, passed, and I'm saying, that's, that's pretty airtight. But then underneath, there's this thing called authority, that says, you know, we could enact such rules and regulations as we deem necessary, from time to time, to affect the provisions of this ordinance.
And I guess my feeling is, is this is, from time to time, we're doing it as a pilot, not as a change. And that if it works out well, then I would think we would need to put a warrant article next year to, and I'd use the word pilot.
Yeah.
And it's only 10.
Yeah, since we're, you know, we've tossed a few things on the lawyer, maybe we just say, you know, if we want to do a pilot, does this, does that, the wording in the ordinance give us the ability to do it?
I can do that, but I would just remind the board that the warrant article, which was voted on, was a petition warrant article, which is advisory. The board so chose to follow the wishes of the voters. I think the language does give you the latitude to accept this opportunity. And I can get clarification from legal, if you like.
Yeah. Linda made a good point about, you know, the door cracks open, and then we kick it open a little more. So I would just want to make sure we're tight here, so that we don't get into a, hey, we said no, you adopted it, and now you don't want to do what we said. That's all, that's all I wanted to.
And we held a number of public hearings, and it was a real close feeling in the community. There are people right now in the community who think we're totally wrong to have closed our beaches, and we're not closing our beaches. We're closing our parking lot. You could park at the neck, walk over and go on to Albee Beach, because we have no way of closing off somebody walking into the water.
I would just, you know, advise that we, we get Nathan to tell us whether that's okay. And then, whatever makes sense, we do it.
Brian, do you want to make a motion on this contingent on legal?
Yeah. So I would say that I will make a motion that we create a pilot program for the summer of 2024, to issue 10 parking passes to the Wolfborough Cary Beach and Albee Beach for the use of Brookfield residents, and to address the need for a warrant article, or to change our ordinance going forward beyond that.
Subject to review of the lawyer. How's that?
Subject to review to a, to town attorney.
Second.
Okay, so we've got Brian, and then we have a second by Paul. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is other business, and I think, Paul, you have some other business?
I do. So a few weeks back, May, mid-May, Amy introduced me to a gentleman by the name of, and if I get this wrong, I apologize, Tom Stegmaier. He is the owner of Wake Winnie LLC. Mr. Stegmaier asked me, you know, asked me about why he can't get dock space at the town docks. And I said, you know, best thing to do is write it up and send it in. Well, he did. He wrote it up and sent it in. You have a copy of that in your packet. I spoke briefly with the chairman, because I believe when I get a letter from somebody, I owe him an answer. I asked the, I asked the chairman, you know, how do you want to handle it? And the initial impression I think Linda had was, we've debated and decided this. I asked Amy to find the minutes of meetings where we debated and decided this, and Amy has come up dry. She has come up with nothing. And she went back and just did keyword searches. So the long and short of this is, this gentleman is saying, hey, why them and not me? And, you know, I don't know what you all want to do, but I think that maybe a discussion here tonight about our feelings, and either myself, or Jim, or whomever can dispatch something back to Mr. Stegmaier and say, at our meeting of 5 June, we had a conversation about your letter that you sent, and here's where we are. So there we are.
Well, I'm willing to go at it in a couple ways. One, the mailboat, and that's why I asked, has a federal contract. That's for the mail. It's been here forever. There's a feeling of grandfathered. We grandfather our hawkers and peddlers. If you have a permit, you go the next year, and you keep it. The Millie Bee is a nonprofit. It's not a for-profit. The Mount Washington has been coming in here again for eons. That is a.
Eons is an economic juggernaut for our town.
You know.
And they, they don't dock here. They just drop.
That's right. You're right. But they have a place that we make sure is there for them at their times. So my feeling is that there are reasons why these two have a slip. And I would like, I would make a motion that we tell Mr. Stegmaier that the board feels that the mailboat, because it has a contractor, contract, and the Millie Bee, because it's a nonprofit, and have been here a long time, are grandfathered and.
And the Mount Washington is a vital.
Right. And but they point out they're not docking. I think he's, you're right. He's after the, he's after the docking space.
He wants, he wants a permanent docking location.
There's the motion.
Yeah, and I mean, I could say, I could take my pontoon boat and say, I'm going to do charters out of there. Can I have a dock too? You know, and then the next person can, and the next person can, and then we have no docking left for just the citizen who's coming to visit Wolfborough.
Yeah, and I think when we redid the docks, we built that other step-down area for these people to come in 10 minutes, pick up there. And we heard him when he asked at that time, and did that when we reconstructed the docks. Dave?
I had a couple of things. The meeting we had in part of the minutes with Torin, I said, Linda asked, do you have a schedule, especially related to the new commercial dock in town docks? He replied, he has no schedule. They book clients close to hour to half an hour. Mr. Harriman says, new dock, was for this type of usage. We'll have to work through the scheduling. They, Wake Winnie depend on phone calls, and on their pickups for customers will happen. It goes on to say, Mr. Stegmaier says, clients are informed in their confirmation email, warning about town docks, two-hour parking in Glendon Street lot should be used. He also says, it's always been difficult to schedule, battling for dock space. Now, the new dock space, similar to the Millie Bee, we could set up a schedule, because we know there will always be a spot. So I don't know what he's complaining about. He said, right in our minutes here, that with the new dock area, he was, seems to me, the way he said it, that he was satisfied. So we approved his landing for Winnie. Then, he also, in a letter, says, this new dock is truly for commercial use. Can also be a 15-minute loading and unloading dock for the public. And what he's saying is, he's having trouble coming into that dock, because the public's parking there. So we may have an enforcement issue for that dock.
May have a what issue, Dave? I didn't hear you.
We may have an issue with the dock. People parking there to go shopping or whatever, not for just offloading. So we have an enforcement problem.
Yeah.
Okay? So it seems to me that, when I read through this stuff, recommended, it says here, he's recommending that a sign be, that clearly states, "Commercial vessels only." So I think that, what I can read here, and what we had at our meeting, was that we need to put a sign there that says, "Commercial use only," and we need to enforce it.
Is, is that spot, "Commercial use only"? Or can a, an island resident dock there and drop off their passengers?
It's a drop-off space.
It's a drop-off point.
So maybe word it that way.
Yeah. Because I don't think there are any cleats that you could hook up onto. It's literally a drop-off.
Are you talking about that little whistle, whistle dock in there? That's not a commercial dock. That's for a drop-off and pickup of people. Because I go in there, and it's a pain in the neck, but if there were no, if that were for commercial only, I mean, no, no place to drop somebody off and pick them up.
I'm not saying that that's the way it has to be.
Okay.
But I'm just saying that they may want to be more signage or something there that says specifically what it's for.
I think, I think that, you know, that the message he sent to me, if I, you know, and I don't want to read it, it just takes so long. His message is, why them, not me? That basically is the message. And why them, he's pointing at the, at the mailboat. And so I think, if I hear Linda's motion, which I will second, is that these vessels are a legacy. And that's it.
Well, one of them has a federal contract to deliver mail. That's significant.
I would say so.
And the Millie Bee's a nonprofit. It's not for business. And those are our two reasons, and the grandfathering.
And, and, you know, very frankly, that may not satisfy him. Maybe the best we can offer, if he wants to take another step.
And he also paid for the dock repairs there as well.
Right.
Not the most recent.
Huh?
Not the most recent. And the other thing that has him upset is the rates, which are being charged to specifically the Millie Bee, for that docking space to land there and stay there. His argument is, if you do that anyplace else on the lake, it's going to be significantly more money, to which we would put the nonprofit out of business.
So does everybody understand the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Does anybody have any more comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And, and just to close out, since he sent a note to me, you want me to respond to him?
Sure.
So I'll need a fresh copy of the minutes. And I'll just say, these are unapproved. If I can get them PDQ, I'll get them out. I'll just say, these are unapproved minutes. We'll vote on approving them at the next meeting. But I just think it's timely to get him an answer. Thank you, Linda.
Okay. Town managers' report.
Yeah, so the big thing that I need to inform the board about, New Hampshire DOT was here tonight, obviously. Had a meeting earlier this week with different division of New Hampshire DOT. Anticipate the fall of 2025, the replacement of the culvert in the hollow just below Weston's Corner. That is going to be probably a three-month project, starting in September of 2025. There's going to be a lot more information coming out on that in the next couple of months. So be aware.
Okay. Committee reports. Let's see, I'll start down here with David. Okay, Brad?
Had a planning board meeting last night, was a work session. And did have a, I met with you and Jim and Steve, and Woodward and Kern, to talk about wastewater treatment plant and future build-out of it, or repairs that needed, and longevity, and stuff like that, so.
And also the sewer capacity.
Sewer capacity, the two, yes, thank you. That was it.
Paul?
I spent a short time this morning with Steve and Bruce at our Libby Museum. We have, we have a need to get some organization around what we're going to do there. I wrote a note for Jim that went over to the gentleman at the, at the Breeze Line, following our meeting we had a week and a half ago. Kind of a data request. Better to have that in our hands when we get to deliberate as to what we want to do with the contract. And I understand Fran came right back to you, Jim, and said he's, he's working on it. Good. And the chairman and I have been working to complete the work for the town manager of a meeting we had with all of us, that work session, about two or three weeks ago. So we've, we've kind of been chewing on that, on that bone. That's all I have.
Brian?
Okay, so we had the Heritage Awards, which were fantastic. There were five nominees. I can't remember them all. I know it was the Avery Building. I know it was the Bridge Falls Path. The barn out on 28.
Which was the old bittersweet.
Yep. And all the nominees were all deserving. The event was a very nice event with red and white wine and charcuterie. So it was, it was a very, very nice night. And it was nice to see people get together with a common goal of preserving the heritage of Wolfborough, and the buildings of Wolfborough. We had a meeting, Linda and Jim and I, and Jason, about short-term rentals. I talked to a couple of. I talked to a couple of the select board members, like I said earlier, over about the Brookfield beaches. I met with Steve Randall and Amy this morning about railings down at the Town Docks. And I went in with one idea, got a second idea, then sat there for two hours and talked to people, and got a third idea. And looking at it, I know that we want to put a railing along that commercial dock. I looked at all the railings that are in downtown. They're the exact same white standard railings on the front of Dock Side, the back of Dock Side, on the Avery Building, on Wolfboro Casuals. The railings that we have there now, there is one new piece of metal railing, there's another old piece of railing that's broken, that is going to have to be replaced fairly soon. I'm almost leaning towards, and I would like the board to go down and take a look themselves, at, at copying those other railings that are on all the other buildings around on our dock, so that we can, as we replace those broken metal railings, we will have something that it all looks the same in, in the dock area. Steve and I and Amy also talked about installing some steps, because there is a high area to a low area on the dock, the commercial dock. And again, talking to people, there's other ways to do it. We can do the steps, but people were concerned, because the steps are going to go kind of in front of that drop-off dock. Well, when people are dropping off, they're getting off in packs, moving fast, carrying things. So there is a potential for a trip hazard there. So we might want to, you might want to go down and take a look at where that is. So we could put the steps on the side, we could put another metal bench as a, as a barrier to keep people from stepping off of that high area, because they step off maybe two feet, they jump down from one dock to the other. And so we could look at maybe putting another, another bench there. People love to donate benches. I bet we can get somebody to donate a bench for there and, and solve the problem at no cost. And I walked, and this is how I learn about what happens in town. Clark, my dog and I, walked Wolfboro for six hours on Tuesday, passed out Lake Winnipesaukee Day flyers and talked to people there. And I talked to probably 100 to 150 people, and not just about Lake Winnipesaukee Day, but just the town in general, to get their feelings and get their pulse of what they like, don't like about what we're doing running the town. And that's where I like to get my information, so that when I come back, I know what the pulse of the people is.
Okay. I do it through my committee work with people who enjoy working on different projects. I had a Wolfboro Waters Committee meeting. We had a Budget Committee meeting. I went to the dedication of the kiosk at the Abenaki Pond and the Bench. I went, on one evening, I went to the Chamber Social. I did half of it. It was at Pop Whalen. I went back over to the Heritage Commission and spent some time there before I had to go home to my grandson's birthday party. I attended a Sinobacteria webinar put on by DES. I had a Friends of Pop Whalen meeting. I was with Brad, talking with Wooden and Kern and Jim about the wastewater treatment plant and sewer capacity. I did the meetings with Paul. I went to the short-term rental with Brian. I had earlier gone down and looked at that drop off and looked at the possibility of us putting something there. But today, I went to the Assessment Committee of Wolfboro Waters, which held its yearly meeting with representatives of Mary Lake, Wentworth Watershed Association, the Lake Winnipesaukee Association, and Rush Pond Association to discuss the water testing results of 2023. Each lake representative explains its association's plan for 2024. The annual meeting of the Lake Association is a perfect opportunity to share ideas, methods of testing, and talk about how to collaborate, and the associations really enjoy coming together. The Wolfboro Waters Assessment Committee will continue its PCR analysis to identify the types of Sinobacteria using a summer intern who will work with Wolfboro Waters Committee and also with UNH. It will start nutrient sampling in two streams coming into Winter Harbor based on the Winter Harbor Watershed Management Plan, and two streams coming into Wolfboro Bay based on the draft Wolfboro Bay Management Plan. The committee will start sampling ventic mats to see if Sinobacteria is present, and these are kind of blackish, ugly mats that sit on the bottom. At times, the lakes, the mats will get air underneath them and lift and kind of flow around, so we're trying to find out whether there is Sinobacteria there. This Saturday, June 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, the Wolfboro Waters Committee is one of the sponsors for the Wentworth Watershed Association Water Summit. In my understanding, they'll be talking about different things homeowners can do and maybe some plants that they can plant to help with runoff. So hope people attend that. Is there any questions from the press? Is Alyssa still on? She's gone. Public input. Oh, you waited a long time. More power to you.
Well, and, and after waiting all that while, I was, I was initially just asking you to put something on the agenda for a future meeting, but if you want to deal with it today, that's perfectly fine, too. My name is Jonathan Dougherty, and I'm representing the North Wolfboro Area Association today. We sent a letter yesterday to Brad Harriman and to Amy and to Steve, who we've been talking with regularly, about setting a width for Haynes Hill Road. I have extra copies of the letter if you, would you like?
That would be great.
Sure.
I just, well, heading those out, I'll just, go ahead, you know, I'll just say that, because you're not on a mic right now anyway, but I did get that yesterday, read through it. I knew tonight's agenda was going to be huge, so my, my plan was to share this back, as you already did with Amy anyway, to probably get it on our next board members' meeting. So that's why they hadn't got this from me at all yet, because we just got it yesterday.
Well, and clearly, I, I understand that's however you'd like to handle it. I think it is an important issue to us. We want to talk with you about it. And it's also somewhat time-sensitive, because we've been working with Steve. We know the schedule is, is moving along. They're planning to start the reclaiming work, you know, on early step on June 17th. Paving will come later, but it, it could be something you want to take up on June 19th. I can get into the substance now or wait until then? That's up to you.
Sure.
Whatever you'd prefer.
I defer to the chairman here, so.
I guess since it's about quarter of, or 10 of 11, and we still have to go into non-public, and you feel it can wait until the next meeting for us to discuss it? Yes, no?
Pardon me?
If that's okay, you waited a long time, unless other board members, it just, we probably would be sharper.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think the next meeting's on the 19th. If you have this early on the agenda, I'd...
All right.
Since it's my anniversary and my wife won't want me here for five hours, that would be great, but that's up to you.
We'll put, we'll try to get you first on the agenda. We do our department heads, and you'll be first after that. And I think...
19, not 20.
19.
19. And we also, didn't we do North Wolfboro Road that width?
That's the precedent.
It's right here. It says North Wolfboro and Genus.
Yeah, it says North Wolfboro Road and Genus Road were also both paved at 19 feet.
Okay. So we will work on this. Jim, would you make a note that Amy puts it very early on the agenda? And we'll spend time when we are probably a little more awake.
Thank you. Hope your meeting doesn't go on too much longer.
Okay. I need a motion to go into non-public session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I got Brian and Dave. Brian, yes, Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? I'm yes. And, okay.[1778.88]